There he is. Hello. Thanks for joining us, Commissioner.
Okay, good, good.
Afternoon.
Here we go.
Sorry, I can't be there in person.
Okay. Well, I would like to call the meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners to order today, Wednesday, July 13, 2022. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. And we do have a consent agenda with two items? Oh, do we have any citizen input? I'm sorry. So already to the hearing. Do we have any citizen input in the room? No one? Fill out a blue form? And anyone on Zoom?
That will be at 2:00 PM. 2:00 PM. Okay, no one else? Okay. Fine. Let's then go to our consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda in two items.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devone?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, let's go to action item, I believe would be number three then. And let's see, who is from the Health Department? It's going to be representing this?
There it is. Tom Kuhn.
We just called on you?
You did?
Ready to go.
You're ready.
All we had to do is consent agenda right before you.
Yes, it's 101.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. We figured there'd be a couple of minutes beforehand. I'm Tom Kuhn. I'm the, today I am the Acting Public Health Director in this capacity.
I'm Lana Lane. I'm the Health Services Accountant.
And today, we are bringing before you the IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority, which is our main funding stream, which, as you know, we come to you usually at the beginning of the year for the total fiscal year award, and then we also come frequently when there are amendments to it, which happen sometimes eight to 10 times in a fiscal year. So what we have here is the initial award for fiscal year '23. It has all the Oregon Health Authority funding streams, also known as program elements, or PE for short. In this case, we are in the middle of the biennium, which is the fiscal year '22 and '23 biennium, so this is the halfway point. And after examining these initial awards, everything lines up with what we were expecting, or if it's not what we were expecting, we know the reason why, and perhaps that funding is going to come at a later time. Also, we often get carryforward money from the previous biennium if we are underspent in certain program areas, where they will, at some point this next fiscal year, give us the balance of what we didn't spend. Some program elements, like the emergency preparedness one, for example, they don't allow carryforward, so we know we're not going to get it from them. But some of the other ones, we do get the carryforward, and that could come at any point this fiscal year, sometimes even as late as like February or March. So that's pretty much what we have before you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
So Lana, are you all up to speed on the different program elements?
Yes, I am. I've been here for over two years.
There you go.
And I live and breathe the program elements. Yes.
Well, the emergency planning, did you say? Or what was the?
Preparedness.
Preparedness, yeah. I know that, yeah, coming through and in and out of COVID, we almost, we lived it now, so there's a different mode, which is planning, you know, what else could we be doing? I understand that, and I've been involved in some of those in the years past, so good to point that out. That one doesn't carry over, but if there's a need, we'll figure out the next project that we could be implementing.
Yes, for sure.
So Tom, would you like to surprise me?
If I could ask a question or two? Commissioner Chang is starting.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Tom and Lana, one of the things I was curious about was the change in value, or the change in dollars from last year's amount was not very large. I'm concerned about whether this allows us to keep up with inflation and maintain current level of service for the program elements included in this agreement.
Yes, great point. It's oftentimes, we do plan on receiving level funding unless the state indicates otherwise, and sometimes if it's originally a federally sourced program, that can also affect our funding amount for the upcoming year. But certainly, that is a great point, that some of the program elements do say stay pretty level almost every year. So that's definitely something good to bring up with our state contacts in regards to that.
And my other question was kind of related. I know, I was trying to think about, you said, well, this is, this is sort of the, this is the main, the main piece, the main funding stream coming from OHA to the county. I do know that there was other things happening at the state level and in the legislature this year, for example, the, the public health modernization package that came through. So I was just wondering whether you could describe both of these, you know, the relationship of those things. Basically, so this is our core funding, how many other nifty things were happening on the side, and what did they do for us?
Yeah, sure. So one thing with modernization, that's a great example, because, you know, we discussed that a lot at our legislative meetings, and in the previous year's calendar year, 2021 legislation, that's where the large amount for the biennium for modernization came through. However, they did not award the funding until January 1st, other than some carryforward money, until they could determine the exact amount, just because it's past so close to the beginning of the fiscal year. So sometimes, it takes a little while for that money to trickle in, other than some funds they give us in good faith to just continue the work that we're already doing. So that's one example of how that might work. Not much occurred in the small session impacting this fiscal year. It's generally these types of things that affect the program elements take place in the big session, because then that lines up with the new biennium. So that's kind of how those things trickle through legislatively. And also, just to note, like, our environmental health program has its own intergovernmental agreement. So sometimes, there are certain program areas that have its own existing contract, and sometimes those, like our drinking water program, used to have its own contract, and then that was put into a program element a few years back. So that can happen as well. And so there are different reasons and mechanisms, and also funding formulas. Each program area tends to have a funding formula of how do they determine the funding, whether it's population, or different demographic type variables that can affect that. So that's some other things that come into this. So not every program element here is, has the same method for coming up why the funding is the way it is. Does that hopefully answer?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I guess the one sort of lingering question is, so we have this, this significant piece, our, our primary agreement with OHA, there was also public health modernization, and were there any other big things happening between the state and, and the county? I, you, you mentioned how that, you know, environmental health has its own separate agreement, but are there other, other important things that happened in the last year that we should be tracking?
This might be a good question for Lana.
Yeah.
Modernization in my realm was, that definitely is the biggest one, so.
I know Pamela Ferguson isn't here today, but she would be able to speak to her program area in the home visiting, and the perinatal care has a program that she's starting that's getting a lot of state attention. It's a program that's just beginning. We haven't had a lot of visits that have started yet, but that would be something that's outside of this IGA. And the funding for that would be from billable services and billing out to commercial payers, Medicaid, and such.
Thank you.
And that one was another one that was going through during the '21 legislative session also, that I, as I recall, we supported.
What's the exact title of that program?
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't have all of the details. So I would be happy to get back to you and have Pamela provide more of that information for you.
So Tom, considering inflation being what it is, if this actually only increased $27,000 on, it's a $4 million grant from OHA, so truly, do you think they're going to make up that difference with the long session?
Well, one thing to keep in mind is that we most likely will get more funding coming in through the carryforward funds, and yes, like, for example, public health modernization, we know they are going to go for an increase in funding for the next biennium. So one of the things that's kind of helped us in, not, not a good thing we, for, you know, in the future, but with vacancies associated with COVID has created vacancy savings, which has kind of helped us to balance with inflation and so forth for this fiscal year. Now, in future years, when that's not the case, and we don't have the vacancy levels like we've had, then, you know, it will be an issue if we don't get funding that keeps up with inflation.
Great. So this is our big, big annual contract with the Oregon Health Authority, so I'll move approval of Chair's signature of document number 2022-550, and Oregon Health Authority Agreement Number 169509-9.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Devone?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you for joining us today.
Yes, thanks. Great to see you in person again.
Yes, in person.
Hopefully, you can do that more often.
Okay, our next item, I believe we're going to have Will and Nicole. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nice to see you all. For the record, I'm Nicole Mardel. I'm a Senior Long Range Planner with Deschutes County Community Development. So before you this afternoon, as you recall from, from last meeting, the Board held deliberations on a remand of a plan amendment and zone change application for Tony Acetti. It's referred to as the Deschutes Junction Remand. So today, we brought you a decision for your consideration through Ordinance 2022-10. So we took some of the comments that we received from our discussion last week, incorporated in this decision. I will note that typically, we do hold a standalone meeting to review the decision, but due to this expedited timeline, we sort of bundled it today. So I'm here mostly to listen to any comments that you may have on the draft decision in your packet. It is the last attachment, I believe it's Exhibit F, and so happy to hear any of your feedback. An ideally recommended motion today is for the Board to approve Ordinance 2022-10 by title only.
Has this been reviewed by the applicant's eternity and representative, you know, the final version that they've been able to review?
The applicant has reviewed the draft decision, and the applicant's landy's planner is behind me today. Pat Clewer is here.
So I guess just a nod that you've been able to review appropriately is my question. Would you, would you say yes, Pat? That's all? Yeah, just making sure.
We just want to make sure it's.
So, yeah, I didn't, I'm not coming in with any, you know, word changes or proposed changes.
Commissioner Chang, did you have any comments?
I, I guess I would just say, I said it at the last discussion of this, of this ordinance, that while I'm not supportive of widespread rezones or redesignations of EFU land, I do think that this one is appropriate because of the adjacent industrial uses, because of its location at a major intersection, and because of, you know, after the appeal hearing or deliberation we had previously, recently, that we've learned that there will be a relatively small number of employees located at this, at this site. So that's all I wanted to say, and I'd be happy to make a motion at this point.
Okay, thank you. If you want to go ahead and do that, that would be fine.
Okay. I move first reading of Ordinance 2022-010 by title only.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Yes, it does seem appropriate, where the property is located, the soils, characterization, truly, that this is, this is a way forward for that land to be used in Deschutes County. So Commissioner Chang, a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Devone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. By title only, Ordinance Number 2022-010, approving an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Change the Comprehensive Plan Map Designation for Certain Property from Agriculture to Rural Industrial, and amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Change the Zone Designation for Certain Property from Exclusive Farm Use to Rural Residential.
Rural Industrial.
Oh, sorry. What did I say that? Well, that was a good read, wasn't it?
Almost.
I know. There's definitely just too many things going on today. So is there anything else we need to do?
Be back in two weeks for second reading and adoption.
Okay, great. So we're going to make the deadline of August 5th.
We will. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you for consolidating it so we could meet that deadline.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Nicole. Thank you, Will. Next item from Behavioral Health.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Shannon Bister-Rogest, Program Manager, or one of them with Deschutes County Behavioral Health. I'm actually sitting in for Janice Garso, who is on a well-deserved vacation, and my colleague here, Amber Clegg, and we are here to request a consideration for an increase of a .5 administrative support specialist for our adult outpatient program. Let Amber take over from here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this request is for a part of a grant we received in 2019, a promoting integrated primary and behavioral healthcare grant for our adult outpatient team at the Courtney Clinic. The grant helped fund a .5 FTE Administrative Support Specialist position, and this was approved through December 31 of 2023. At this point in time, we're requesting the position be increased to 1.0 FTE for the remainder of the grant. This PIPBIC grant is underspent at this point in time of $75,406, which will help cover the increase in cost for the FTE, which would be $45,299 for the remainder 18 months of the grant.
I have a question. The wording says which will cover, but you said will help.
Well, excuse me, will cover. I apologize.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify if we need to put that word in there, because it does make a difference.
Makes a difference, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay, I'm just like going, well, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure. See, I'm always adding words.
So having those $75,000 available, we're committing 45 to make this a full-time position. Is this one person's job, or, or does somebody already split it, and we need to find the next person, or what does that look like?
Well, at this point in time, we are looking to hire, the .5 position did recently leave.
Okay.
At that point, and prior to her departure, the rest of the duties that supported this team were spread out amongst other admin specialists. There was a previous consideration a couple of years ago to increase it to 1.0 for a variety of reasons that wasn't pursued at that time, but the increase in administrative duties has really meant that we needed a 1.0 FTE to support these programs.
Promoting integrated primary and behavioral healthcare. So just getting the acronym down here.
Yes.
PIPBIC.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I ask what the vision is for this position after December 31, 2023? Would, would the hope be to continue this as a 1.0 FTE, or to go back to .5? Does it depend on funding?
Yes, I think it depends on a variety of things. I think we will evaluate over the next year and a half whether the 1.0 FTE was indeed needed. We'll certainly evaluate their duties and their ability to keep up with the demand for the, for both, for the adult outpatient program. I think we'll also continue to look and pursue grants, such as the CCVHC No Cost Extension Grants that are available to us to apply for. In addition, of course, we'll continue to look at our revenue and whether or not we have the funds to support the position at a 1.0 FTE if we do not obtain any other funding for this particular program.
I think what I'd add is just that with any grant comes a lot of reporting, and so if, if we did not continue with this grant, then we would look at whether or not this reduced the need for reporting and the requirement for this position. But with grants comes that administrative overhead and, and requirements to, to support.
As the current grant expired December 31, 23, so the whole, kind of the whole effort right now is funded to that?
Correct.
Okay.
And so you are actually looking for a new person? Is that the way I understood it?
We are, at this point in time, waiting to see if this approval, this is approved, and then we would be able to.
The whole person?
We would be able to, yes.
Get the whole person, not just a part of a person, just the whole person, that's.
Right.
Exactly.
And this is just for discussion today and support to bring back? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that's the idea, so that we can, from today, if approved, then we would, we would recruit.
And we would see a consent agenda item now for?
For next week.
The FTE?
Yes.
Good. Commissioner Chang, are you supportive?
I'm supportive.
Okay, good. So I think.
I am also.
Please do bring it to our consent agenda then for next week.
Perfect.
Here we go.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I believe Nathan and Ed Keith should be on our screen. So do you want to, I'll just bring up Ed then?
Yeah, just, he's there.
Okay.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Ed.
Thanks, Commissioners. Ed Keith, County Forester. It looks like Nathan hasn't joined us yet, so I'll just proceed and hopefully answer any questions that may have been for Nathan. But I will just start us off by saying that this is, bringing back a order from something we discussed last week. So this is basically a response plan for unprotected lands. Those lands within the county that do not fall within the jurisdiction of the Oregon Department of Forestry or a structural fire protection district. So they may have some level of protection, and with that, I'm referring to, they may, they may be within lands of a Rangeland Fire Protection Association, but for, for, for the purposes of structural protection, there is, there is no responding entity. So, so just want to be clear on, on the lands that we're speaking of, the jurisdictions are generally, the, the larger portions are in the far east part of the county, Brothers, Brothers Milliken, Hampton area, and then the kind of north central part of the county between Redmond and Sisters, that what's commonly referred to as Lower Bridge. So again, you might recall, we had the Grandview Fire last year that threatened the Lower Bridge area, and we were kind of caught somewhat off-guard by the State Fire Marshal responding and asking for a delegation from the county. So the purpose of this process is to kind of be a little bit more clear and, and have a, a little bit more of a well-defined process for how, should a fire like that happen in the future that threatened a significant amount of structures that would require a State Fire Marshal response, that we'd have a way of requesting that support from the state, where there is no other entity that's, that has the ability to request that. So, so don't want to restate too much of what we did last, last week, but in a lot of places, you know, this request would normally come from a structural fire protection district, like a Sisters Camp Sherman, or a Cloverdale, or a Redmond, or a Bend, or a Lapine. Here, there is no entity to make that, so they're asking that the county make that request. The request then still comes through the County Fire Defense Board Chief. And, and in that case this year, it's Chief Roger Johnson with Sisters Camp Sherman, but that does rotate from year to year. And then those requests are, at the discretion of the Fire Marshal, approved for their response at, at the expense of the state. So, so the notion last week was to come back to the Commissioners with an order, and hopefully we captured that conversation accurately, as far as the procedures that, that we would follow, that, you know, we become, we, we could become aware of a fire in those lands from a variety of sources, but typically, like an adjoining fire district or the Fire Defense Board Chief would be possibly, you know. would be possibly, you know, in an example, in contact with Nathan as the emergency manager. They would confer that, yeah, that looks like a significant threat to a number of structures. We want to go ahead and make that request to the State Fire Marshal. They make that request. The State Fire Marshal then, if they would approve that, would come back to the county and ask us to sign a delegation, which is attached as an additional exhibit to this order, just as an example. That's been provided by the State Fire Marshal's Office as their typical kind of template of delegation. And then we would bring that back for a full board approval at your next meeting. So hopefully that's what's kind of was discussed last week and in this order, but I would open it up to any clarifications or questions, and I see that Nathan has joined us as well.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you for that information. I do know that the Office of Emergency Management was having a meeting today in Sisters. Now, is there anyone that actually lives in Bend that serves on that board?
I was not aware of that meeting, but Nathan may have been.
Okay, because I met a couple of them this morning at 7:00. So I said, "Would you just please stay in Sisters for the next two months so that we don't have problems here?" You know, because if they're here, we won't have a problem, right?
Sure.
So Nathan, what do you think?
Hey, good afternoon. Sorry, the board, you're very efficient today. I wasn't, I was just getting on when I found out you started the topic. Yeah, the meeting in Sisters is the group of regional coordinators from Oregon, now Department of Emergency Management, and they were having their, a meeting of all coordinators from around the state. I get a chance to meet with them, some of our counterparts from the Crick and Jefferson met with them yesterday, so. Yeah, sorry, I was a little tardy, but it sounds like Ed covered it well, and just wanted to make, help craft us a procedure that is easier for all parties concerned.
So in the big picture, these are unprotected lands that don't have structural protection. So during an event, you know, and this has just been stated, nobody's coming, so now we're delegating authority that, I mean, it really isn't there, but the resources are available during wildfire events now. So this is, is this a new resource or a new policy at the state level that even empowered this? Because as I say, I was in the room last year when we did this in Sisters, but I was kind of scratching my head as it happened too, saying, "Yeah, well, if you have a fire truck and there's fire going towards a building, let's get something around it, if possible, if the resources are available." So, you know, what's the kind of the legal step that we're fixing here? I mean, if I'm being clear on a question. So the delegation of authority, thank you, are we giving some kind of a legal umbrella or coverage or anything when this happens?
We did have quite a bit of back-and-forth discussion with the Office of State Fire Marshal actually, as far as making sure we were clear with them that the county does not have any authority or jurisdiction for providing that structural protection. And it did actually, I think, go up to the deputy chief level to make sure that they were clear at all levels, because that actually was not clear at the local level when we kind of began this conversation with them on the need for a more clear process. More, yeah, so there isn't an expectation at the State Fire Marshal's Office that we're providing some level of structural protection and we're handing that off to them. They are just asking, because there is no other entity or political subdivision that has any responsibility or jurisdiction out in those lands, that they receive that request from the county. I do think that at one time Nathan did some research on a statute that says, you know, generally counties have some general responsibility for areas, but we're definitely not saying that we have the, you know, any kind of liability to provide that structural protection. They just don't have anyone else to turn to to make that request, so they're just asking us to make a request at no cost or liability necessarily to us, but because there's no other legal entity out there to make a request.
It's just kind of a, I mean, I don't, so I'm wondering how legal this is, you know, is it more of a courtesy, the fact that we are in your jurisdiction doing fire? So Dave might...
A little bit of that. It's also, the county has general police powers over lands within its jurisdiction, and I can't speak for the Department of Justice, and I'm sure they're behind this to a certain level, but, yeah, I think a lot more of it's more window dressing than anything really substantive, but if it makes them comfortable and a little more willing to come in and engage, then it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, and I agree, it's a win-win, so that's good. Okay. Well, and I know there's legislative efforts to make sure all lands are covered in some fire response, so that's a bigger picture item also. The next step?
Yes, that is coming by 2026, so more to learn on that. In the fairly near future, there's not a lot of direction on what that looks like, but, yeah, that is coming.
There'll probably be some legislative discussions when this, when they're in session. All right.
My one question about this is, I'm hoping, Ed and Nathan, for you guys to just kind of describe in real time, like, how this all works. Fire starts, it's in an unprotected area, you know, what happens, who talks to who, and, you know, what decisions get made? So, I mean, you did a great job of laying this out in this document, but can you just kind of walk us through a real-time scenario?
Yeah, I can maybe walk through that scenario. So, for example, there's kind of two scenarios that seem to happen. One is a fire starts on some sort of protection, so we could use the Grandview Fire last year as an example. That started, started combination, I think Cricket River National Grasslands and Oregon Department of Forestry protection. And then that began to threaten unprotected areas. So as, when the State Fire Marshal resources came in and requested delegation authority, they requested that since unprotected lands were also threatened, that they would hold the unprotected lands as part of the whole incident, and that's when they requested a quote-unquote "request" and then assigned delegation of authority. So that's probably historically the most common scenario, I think, around the state, is kind of a large incident that starts to threaten unprotected lands. Another scenario would be a fire starts in un- or under-protected areas, say Lower Bridge, and it's clearly spreading, it's going to escape initial containment, it's going to threaten multiple, you know, you know, large area, and basically the recognition is that if we can get some resources real fast, maybe potentially limit the spread and scope of that fire and protect property, that would be, so that request would likely either A would come because county staff, whether Sheriff's Office or Forestry is already engaged, because we're aware of it, that request would then, we would talk with the County Fire Defense Board Chief or the on-call duty officer for the Fire Defense Board Chief, make a determination, or probably at their recommendation, that state resources would be advantageous to limit the size and scope of the fire or to protect properties, and then make that request. At that point then, county administration would be, need to be notified, knowing that possibly a delegation of authority might be coming later. I hope that kind of lays out the, a likely, couple likely scenarios.
And then what, when you give that signal to county administration, what are all the things that happen on our end?
I would say, you know, would maybe defer to Ed or on this, but I would say typically it's notification first, so that the Commissioners are aware and that county administration is aware, potentially some public information sharing would be occurring through Whitney and her team, but then also ultimately learning who is going to be available and to sign a delegation if necessary, and identify when that meeting would be to have the signer of the delegation, you know, be present at an in-briefing meeting. If typically, and I think staff can assist, either from the Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Program, or Ed and his team could probably assist with helping with some of those, you know, getting information for the in-briefing, but usually that signer of that delegation of authority would be present at that in-briefing of a team coming in, be a, have an opportunity to give some insight into values at risk in Deschutes County that, you know, the county is most concerned about, some direction towards incident priorities and things like that, and then sign that delegation. And then somebody from the county would be expected to attend cooperator meetings and/or planning meetings as needed for the duration of that incident. Did I miss anything, Ed?
No, I would just, I would just add, you know, we try to communicate with the board through the administrator as incidents emerge across the county, regardless of jurisdiction, so that you're aware of them. And so hopefully, you know, I could, for the majority of incidences, may not even be the first time that you heard of it, it may be kind of emerging, you might hear about it, and then, oh, it's going to escape initial attack. We would try to provide notices as, you know, as things progress so that you're not caught by surprise. And then I would say, typically, we do have some time, because a lot of those resources are mobilized from other parts of the state, we're looking at, but from the time we would, we might notify you of a pending request to the time that we're doing an in-briefing, it may be six to 12 hours, and in a lot of cases, by the time that in-briefing of that transfer of command actually takes place. But I think Nathan covered it pretty well.
Okay, so Ed, I have a question. Do we have fire vehicles, people at the fairgrounds like we had last year? Are they staging here at all?
Not at this time, unless that's something... There's a possibility that they would be during like a severity situation, a lightning bust or other, but I don't think that we're at that point, at this, at this point in time of the progression of the season. Wouldn't be surprised if we're there by August or so, but, you know, partially dependent on forecasted lightning is a lot of times when those resources get triggered.
Well, I'm real comfortable with this. You know, we've had some real good communication paths during events. Sometimes it's a text from county administrator real quick saying something's evolving, and then an email following with more details. And then, as I say, this procedure as defined in this, this document talks about Commissioners ratify the signature of county designee at the next meeting, so as long as it can be done real-time on the ground, then we can acknowledge it as it's happening as fast as we can.
And that reminds me of something that's really, well, especially if people are aware of it with gas prices being so horrible at this moment, but keep your gas tank half-full, because that Sunday, I think it was July 11th, I could see the Grandview Fire perfectly from my house, and I drove to Redmond because my tank was at half-full, and then the fire looked really big. So just, you know, reminding the community, don't drive around on empty if you can at all afford to at least keep a half a tank full. Just helps you in an emergency situation.
I guess I would just say, I'm really glad that all these opportunities to coordinate in-fire response are happening, and glad that this, putting this piece in place will help to streamline that a little bit. With that, I'll move board approval of Order 2022-037, in order delegating authority to request state resources for wildfires on unprotected lands.
I will second it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair definitely votes yes on this. I'm glad the state is going to have resources for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Nathan. Okay, so, looks like Item 7 will be starting at 2:00 PM. Do we have any other items at this time?
None for me.
What?
None for me.
Okay, I know we have a letter, I believe it came from Christie. Is that something that we could do at this moment?
Let me see if Christie's available to come over.
It was a letter supporting Rick Russell's program?
I just followed up. She is, was monitoring the board's meeting, and I'd imagine she'll be over shortly, but if you want to review the draft now, I'm happy to take notes as you run through that.
Okay. Does everyone have a copy of that letter?
I didn't bring a copy, but I did see it real quick on my computer.
Okay.
On her way over.
All right.
So, and we've, yeah, we've committed funding, so this really is the backup, acknowledging our partnership.
Right. Mr. Chang, do you have a copy of the letter?
Pulling it up right now, and likewise, I reviewed it, and I'm supportive of us essentially putting in writing what we already committed to in dollars.
Okay.
So, yeah, as I said, I didn't prepare any word changes, but...
Okay, so we should be okay then? Sounds like we're off-line with...
Was Christie going to try to get online or come across the street?
I believe Christie's on her way across the street.
Okay, because we'll be done.
I hope she's not walking too fast.
Well, so let me acknowledge, I just have other items real quick. Sun River-Lapine Economic Development Board Meeting on Tuesday at noon, that was yesterday at noon. Good group. There's a lot of activity. Folks are really looking at, you know, business, there's business activity discussions all over the place, and it just feels like something might come into place, and especially with the cost of fuel, you know, there's always been, naturally been a set of, you know, employed people that are commuting, so the dynamics are changing for people looking for jobs in the southern Deschutes County also, instead of having to commute 30 or 40 miles each day. So we'll see where all that goes, that's kind of the big picture. And then also, last night, Historical Society Board Meeting, so I'm attending those as an ex officio member. Interesting discussion, because Kelly Cannon-Miller joined the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting, it was in this room on Monday night, about Peterson Rock Garden, and the big picture there is, you know, there's, it sounds like the people that want to purchase it, so it's just information, I think this was discussed Monday night, are advocates of the historicalness of the site. So the value right now is to get a transaction between two people, you know, it's a private transaction, and show support for the site. You know, that's Peterson Rock Garden, which we've heard a little bit about from some different people here. So I think those are the last two things I had done.
Okay. And I do want to mention that Route 31, which goes from Lapine to Sun River, I did actually speak in person to Tammy Bani yesterday by accident, and reminded her of how important that route is, because that's for people that work, and especially with gas prices being what they are. And she said, "For the community, if I can find some bus drivers, they don't have to have their CDL license, they have small vehicles," and she recognizes and acknowledges the importance of keeping that route going for people that are working in Sun River. So hopefully something good will happen, and then...
Well, along those lines, the Transit Center in Lapine between 97 and Huntington on Fourth Street is being built out right now. Remember, this was a city contract supported by a bunch of entities, ODOT and everybody. So the city of Lapine does have the contract, concrete curbs, sidewalks are going in, sure it's going to be asphalt coated, so there'll be a welcoming parking spot for that route, too. So that's another phase that's going to really empower that.
Okay. And then Monday night, the Fair Association did have their meeting. I think we're less than 25 days to the fair, something like that. The association is incredibly well-organized, working together quite nicely, and really looking forward to the fair and the rodeo, and all the, a lot of new things that they have implemented into the program this year. So it should be really fun, and, you know, we're really looking forward to that event, the first week of August. So, thank you to the Fair Association and for Kerry Penhalis' leadership. I believe he's doing an excellent job. But they are looking for someone... But they are looking for someone to run the goat barn. So they've checked with Jefferson County, they're checking with Crook County. Okay, if you know of anybody that has goats and would love to run that barn, that would help the team.
An old time for each of that wants to get back into it?
Yes, yes. I never had goats.
Me neither.
I only had sheep. So anyway, I don't, I think that's beyond my pay grade, running a goat barn.
I'll just report back that yesterday late afternoon before I was notified that I had had a COVID exposure, I went to the Envision Bend Media Event where they, where they launched their online survey and are launching a whole bunch of community forums to engage the public in, you know, both within Bend and in the greater Bend area in contributing to, to the next vision for the Bend area. And so that there are a tremendous amount of opportunities for people to provide their input into that process to help articulate what they want to see for their community in the future. So there's, there's that. And earlier in the day, I participated in a field trip with the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project to review the West Bend project. Some of you may be aware that there was, that there was a, one unit on that, on that project that was pretty controversial over the, over the winter into the spring. So the, the goal of this field trip was to reaffirm the agreement, the kind of shared vision among a bunch of really diverse stakeholders so that the Deschutes Collaborative could speak with a unified voice to the public and continue to promote, promote active forest restoration in, particularly in the dry pine forests that surround the settled communities in Deschutes County.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Chang. Christie, would you like to, we discussed your letter as you were walking across the street. Did you discuss it? Well, we did, and everyone is very happy, I believe, to sign it. And, you know, we are supporting the Mountain View Fellowship Church Safe Parking Program. In fact, talked to some people that were with the program on Friday night and said, I was really hoping that the next parking lot that they get, they can bring families in. I just thought that was, you know, they hadn't done that yet, and I was really hoping that that could be a bit of an add-on to the program that they're doing.
So Commissioner Chang handed up on his computer, and Commissioner Dare has a copy of it, and I was able to review it. So, yeah, just, as we asked you to come over here, we all determined we're supportive of the letters, so just letting you know now.
Okay. Thank you. No, thank you, thank you.
So we'll, we'll route this over to Sharon Keith just to have the board signature blocked and have you sign, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us. All right.
So to formalize it, you know, I'll move approval of that letter. I guess I don't know the specifics now, sorry.
Oh, here are the specifics.
So this is going to be a letter to the Mountain View Fellowship Church, Rick Russell, in support of the safe parking program that we've funded previously. That was my motion.
Thank you. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Christie. All right, so we will start at 2:00 for our public hearing in a few minutes. Just a quick break.
A minute break.
Everybody's focused.
Good idea. Okay. It's a minute to go.
Oh, no, I meant the other, the other bus.
Okay. Stephanie, are we ready? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, we will reconvene Dushuts County Board of County Commissioners meeting on July 13, 2022, and we are, we will now open our public hearing. And let me read you some documentation on our hearing today. The scope of this public hearing is to singularly determine whether the commissioners should refer a measure to the ballot in November, which, if approved by the voters, would prohibit psilocybin operations within unincorporated Dushuts County. The measure would not impact psilocybin operation within the incorporated cities. Each person wishing to testify will have three minutes in which to do so. These are the procedures for them today. At the start of the hearing on Zoom, the panelists will be the Board of County Commissioners and staff only. Attendees will be general public and media. Testimony is allowed for three minutes, and the time clock will be displayed on the television monitors, which you see now. The Board of County Commissioners Chair will call for public testimony in the following order: attendees participating by attending in person, that will be first; number two, attendees participating through Zoom conference call will be second; and third will be attendees participating via phone call, which Stephanie will help organize for us. For those in the room, please fill out a blue request to speak form that is located near the door in the wooden tray and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please have a seat at the testimony table. At the beginning of your testimony, please state your name and address. For those participating via Zoom, once your name is called, you will be elevated from attendee status to panelist, and the audio will be unmuted. Once your testimony is over, you will be returned to attendee status. For those participating via Zoom using a phone number, the last four digits of the attendees' number will be announced and will be elevated to panelist status with audio unmuted. Once your testimony is over, you will be returned to attendee status.
Okay, so those are the rules. We see our three-minute clock, and we, let's see, Dave, is there anything you would like to add at this moment?
Other than to just point out, this is the time for the public hearing. I believe you've opened it. You've given the ground rules for the public hearing. The testimony is limited to three minutes. There is a clock up on the board, and we'd certainly ask that people honor that. To the extent that you agree with what something, someone said ahead of you, you can just simply say, I agree with what so-and-so said. You don't have to necessarily repeat what so-and-so said, if you're comfortable saying, I agree with what so-and-so said. It's, it's, it's the, the weight of, I think, the testimony that the board's looking for and what people have to say, and not the, the, the numbers or the volume necessarily. And just to be, for clarification's sake, this process was expressly authorized in the ballot measure 109. I think some folks that have sent in communications might not have been fully aware of that, but ballot measure 109 did provide for local jurisdictions to provide a referral to the, the voters to potentially opt, opt out of these type of operations. And so this isn't anything unique that Dushuts County is doing. This was provided for in the actual ballot measure that folks voted on at the state level. So I would just clarify that.
Thank you, Dave.
So a couple of other notes. The Board of Commissioners has, this topic was brought up to us. On June 1st, we had a, an agenda item which does include the ballot measure, so it's available on our website under the June 1st meeting. Also, June 13th is where we started to talk about, you know, this is a, a land use issue, the domain of land use is what we're here to talk about today, because it's not a vote to, you know, take away this opportunity statewide or even, you know, for services. It's just that the land use in the rural county is the topic that we're talking about today.
Yes. Thank you so much.
If I could just, if I could just add to that, I, I just want to emphasize that I think some of our significant concerns about this ballot measure are land use-related, because the state has not completed its rulemaking yet, which leaves us uncertain about what, what the potential land use implications of measure 109 implementation might be. But I, I do believe that we are going to hear from some of the people giving testimony today about their visions for, you know, what psilocybin facilities might look like, which will, will clarify a little bit for us what the land use implications might be. And I, I also just want to say that Dushuts County, besides being the land use authority in the unincorporated county, is also the behavioral health authority, the, the local mental health authority, community mental health authority, for the entirety of Dushuts County, including the incorporated areas. And I believe we have a responsibility as the community mental health authority to consider all of the potential therapies, treatments, medications that might be available or accessible to our community to address the kinds of behavioral health concerns that they have. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang. Okay, so do we have any blue sheets filled out?
We don't, but I'm happy to come collect them. So if you have a blue test, a request to speak form, you can go ahead and hand that to me.
And please remember, identify your name and your address when you are testifying first, so it goes into our pub, public record.
And thank you for joining us, everyone.
Yes. Okay. Oh, right. Let's do that. If we, we could call two at a time, so the first person can speak, and then we'll go to the, the second one, and that will help save motion time today. So if Christopher Maddox wants to come up, and Chad Cuskey, Cuskey? Sorry. One of you can be first?
And the microphones pick up pretty well, so just have, you can kind of put them towards your mouth, but you don't need to get real close to them.
Sure thing. Can you hear me okay?
There you go.
I don't know.
Siri can hear you.
Something went wrong.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Chad, Chad Cuskey. Address is 84 Weatherstone, Lakos Weagle, Oregon, 97035. I'm a retired Navy SEAL. I was a key endorser for measure 109. I spent eighteen and a half years in the Navy, and I did 12 combat deployments, after which I was suffering from PTSD, anxiety, depression, and a major substance abuse disorder, using cocaine, heroin, and alcohol, trying to medicate myself. I was completely lost and hopeless, and I would felt totally disconnected from, from the world, from my loved ones, from life, and I, I didn't see a way out. After two year, two and a half years of, of seeking and hearing optimistic things about treatment with psilocybin, a former teammate of mine connected me to a program down, down in Mexico. Two and a half months later, I was able to travel down to Mexico and go through a psilocybin treatment, and it absolutely radically transformed my life in one weekend. It's been a lot of work since, integrating everything that I, that I gained from that experience, but it helped me to defeat the battle with addiction. It helped me to regain my life back, to find happiness and joy, and to start healing. Subsequently, after a, a year of diligent work and, and being on the healing process myself, I felt ready and in a position to go back and to pay that forward to other teammates. So I ended up working back at this retreat center in Mexico for about a year. During that time there, I saw, I witnessed firsthand upwards of 200 of my former teammates who were all experiencing very similar things as I was, find healing with psilocybin. We also were able to treat their, their spouses and significant others, and they were able to find healing as well. I think it's a, I think it's a tragedy that veterans that serve here in this country have to travel to other countries to go find this, this amazing medicine, healing opportunity. You know, if you're a veteran struggling with TBI, PTSD, a lot of the issues that come along with that, going to a foreign country can be a monumentally terrifying thing to do, especially when you're going to, to, to embark on a, on a healing journey. I think it's so crucial that, that these services are safely offered here in a safe and secure setting with people that care and are knowledgeable and can help people find healing. You know, not just for veterans, but for anyone who's suffering. You know, mental, mental health here in Oregon is, I think, rated second worst in the nation, and this is an amazing, amazing medicine opportunity. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Okay. The next person to come up would be Carnahan, Benjamin Carnahan, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Christopher.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Christopher Maddox, and I live at 3749 Southwest Badger Avenue in Redmond, Oregon. And I also am a former Navy SEAL. I served from 2005 to 2016, and I was medically retired in 2016. Multiple combat deployments, multiple combat operations, and I was also a lead medic and a lead breacher. And towards the end of my career, I was trying to find help, basically kind of lost my purpose. I also started suffering from substance use disorder, was on, was that, was diagnosed with PTSD and substance use disorder, and I was struggling. I had no purpose. I had no way out, is what I felt. And basically, I've tried every Western-based approach to medicine and to healing everything that I was suffering through. And, you know, I could maintain periods of sobriety. I was on 12 different medications at the start of January 2021. I was actually currently in a 30-day rehab facility. And when I say I've tried everything, I've been, checked myself in the hospitals over four different times. I've had multiple different psychiatrists, and I've tried everything from cognitive processing therapy to cognitive behavioral therapy to talk therapy, equine therapy, you know, canine therapy, you name it, I've done it. And it, it would help for a while, but it was almost like a surface-level kind of healing. It wasn't really getting to the nature of it. And something that I've studied with, it's basically, Special Operation Forces have a profound way to basically deal with combat stress and psychological warfare. So then trying to take these types of approaches to healing, they can also be very resistant to that as well. So I was in a, I was in a facility, and somebody reached out to me, a former teammate, and he's like, what if I could tell you there's something that could potentially heal you from this? I ended up going down to Mexico as well, and I tried psilocybin, and within four days of the treatment, I was completely revolutionized in every aspect. I've been off my medication, all of them, since April, maintained steady job, family, everything's great, and I feel like I'm me again. And the biggest thing that I can, the biggest takeback for me is like, it was hard having to go there. It was hard having to get on a plane. I almost didn't make it. Flew to San Diego, and I was ready to check myself in a mental hospital, because I thought I was crazy. I was like, what is this going to do? And when I got enough, when I was able to kind of overcome the fear of it and actually get down there and allow this medicine to work, it was just, it was mind-changing. It was a complete game changer for me. So having that available here in Dushuts County with all the people suffering from it, you know, and unincorporated Dushuts County, it's like, I don't have to leave my home. And I've been here since 2019, and I love this place. And it's just, there's so many other people suffering from it. I feel could be greatly affected, so that's all I really have to say, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for sharing.
Christopher, do you, you live in Redmond. I just.
I do, yes, that's correct.
I'll write that down.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For coming today. Okay. It looks like Adam DeTire, DeTire? Next person? After Benjamin.
Hi. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Benjamin Carnahan. My address is 623 Southeast Sixth Street in Bend, Oregon, 97702. I too am a Navy veteran. I was a Navy chaplain for six years. I have non-combat PTSD and vicarious PTSD from all the counseling that I was doing. The Navy tried to treat that with medications, and I went through almost a year of trying every combination dose and different medication for my PTSD, to absolutely no success and sometimes worsening it. Since leaving the Navy, I've tried EMDR, along with various talk therapies, also a lot of CBD, which I am thankful is legal here in Oregon. CBD is the only thing that's really helped, but all it really does is help me sleep, and it takes the edge off the anxiety. It, it doesn't cure anything. I have been in contact with numerous veterans who have used psilocybin very successfully, and I, I think it is borderline criminal that the VA is not prescribing psilocybin to every veteran with PTSD. Also, it's my understanding that the footprint of the facilities, as well as their water use, is extremely minimal, and so I see no reason why this should be allowed in Dushuts County. I'd also like to thank the two veterans who came before me and echo what they said. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Okay, thank you, Benjamin. Okay. Piper Lucas, do you want to come up with Adam?
Yeah, my name is Adam DeHir, for the record. Thank you. And reside at 670 Southeast Glencoe Place in, in Bend, Oregon here. And I want to start off by thanking the veterans that shared their stories today. I'm fortunate enough to not have had to go through those traumas myself. I'm a CEO of a local business here, and I'm very active in the Oregon entrepreneurship and sustainability community. And I, here, I'm really just to draw attention to what I find as a breakdown in the democratic process that's going on. I'd like to just begin by clarifying a, a few points. Do the Commissioners here know the percentage of the voters that elected them in each of their cases? As a reminder, Phil, you were elected by 52.3%. Tony, you were elected by 51.2%. And Patty, you were elected by 50.5%. And you know what percentage of the voters in Dushuts County voted to pass measure 109? It's 52.8%. So there's actually more support for this measure in this county than for any one of you as county commissioners. So should we have a recall for your positions? Because that kind of seems absurd and a waste of our time. This is an example of the wastefulness of government in my eyes. Voters have already told you what we want, and it's your job to administer our decisions. And it reflects this smug belief that politicians oftentimes have, that they know better for their constituents than what the constituents tell them they want. This is an obstruction of democracy. And if you don't see that, and if you want to take up our time to fight this issue with your personal fears of, and misunderstandings, it neglects your duty to serve at the pleasure of the county. Please don't be tone deaf to this need for innovative medical treatment. And please stop wasting our time to have to come out here and say again what we want. This is not a good use of government. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Piper, is it IOT?
Piper, oh, sorry.
No, Piper, yeah, you're next, but I'm just asking for the next person to come up. It's, it looks like it's an I or a J, YOTI. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it a J? Is your name, does it start with a J?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, Piper.
Hi, my name is Piper Lucas, and I live at 65729 Old Bend-Redmond Highway in Tumalo. And I have lived here for 18 years and contributed to the community with architectural services, both commercial and residential. We have heard a lot from our veterans, thank you for coming and, and giving your testimony. And we're going to hear about the health benefits. And I would like to say, I personally have gone through a guided psilocybin journey and had an incredible breakthrough, which talk therapy could not get me through. So I have a personal experience with it as well. I've had the opportunity to travel to different countries and visit psychedelic healing retreat centers. As an architectural designer, I am keenly interested in how the spaces are arranged and what services are necessary for a safe and impactful session, and where these retreat centers are located in neighborhoods. I've also been speaking with a few business owners around the state about their future service centers and what services they are hoping to provide for their clients and communities. There appear to be three different types of service centers that you could expect to see: urban, inside an urban center that's probably going to look like a therapy center; rural, that's more like a retreat center; and clinical, for the end-of-life care, that might look more like in a hospital setting. All three are completely different and attract and serve a different clientele. The urban service center would look like a therapist's office near an urban core. I anticipate these to be in existing office buildings, not necessarily medical in nature. I know there are a few therapists in Bend who are offering, are hoping to offer psilocybin in their offices. I have some information about a service center I visited in San Francisco. Just to kind of give you an idea of what it could look like and where it is.
Do you have a copy for Phil, too?
I do, yeah. Can you get it by email?
Okay, thank you.
This is completely incognito from the street. You can kind of see the top-left picture shows there's nothing that would be any different from the businesses next to it. You could, in the Lux statement, if someone wanted to, provide a smaller sign or include something in the sign ordinance, if that were needed. If there were going to be outdoor spaces, I've heard this has been a concern, you could also require that there be a privacy fence to make neighbors feel a little bit more comfortable. So that is one of the, one of the treatment centers I could foresee happening. And the second one is a retreat center in the rural areas. And this is one in Layton County.
Okay.
It's a potential as well.
Okay.
These are very different. Back to the mic. These are very different in nature, because it will require, probably require overnight stays. And so with our current planning division, it's, it's difficult for that to meet into our zoning ordinances, and I would strongly recommend a conditional use permit process for these rural service centers. I personally believe that all three are extremely necessary, because they reach very different clientele and would allow people living in cities more accessibility going to the urban centers, and then allow people traveling from afar places to come and visit and safely take psilocybin.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Coming in and bringing news.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like Sarah Abetti?
Thank you. My name is Jo Tima, and I'm a former outpatient treatment center owner focused in the treatment of post-traumatic stress and addiction. For 35 years, I've been involved in the healing business as both a clinical director and as a chief executive in a variety of treatment settings. I am also a veteran of the US Army Vietnam era, and I'm also the widow of a career military man who served three tours in Vietnam and died from post-traumatic stress and alcoholism. Back then, there was no understanding of trauma. There were limited treatments. But I became an up-and-coming expert and ended up serving a wide variety of people in an outpatient trauma treatment center and, for a period of 15 years. I focus on first responders in treatment, including firefighters, paramedics, police officers, sheriffs, department. I have training through the FBI and a variety of other professional organizations for the critical incident debriefing stress, and I've responded to numerous mass shootings and disasters all over the country. I focus also on emergency medical personnel, emergency room doctors, healthcare workers, and veterans. I came to Oregon because they made psilocybin legal, and I have an interest in creating a consciousness center that employs clinical therapists with a medical director, somewhat modeled on the outpatient and inpatient treatment centers that I've owned in the past, but with additional opportunities for people to get that next level of awareness that these medicines can bring. This is a very important opportunity for everyone in the community, for mental health services to expand, for veterans to do retreats here in Dushuts County instead of in other countries. So I know that the county has a strong commitment to veterans and first responders, and it seems an ideal match for me to offer these guys and girls, women, that serve the opportunity to have a retreat here in Oregon where psilocybin is legal. I hope you'll give me that opportunity. I've been very involved in watching the rulemaking through the Psilocybin Advisory Board and Oregon Psilocybin Services. I'm very impressed with what they've created, because honestly, I know that these medicines need to be handled in a very safe and professional manner. And one thing I'm really grateful for is that everyone I've met who wants to be involved in this are professionals. They are clinicians, they are medical doctors, they're nurse practitioners, hospice workers, and veterans specialists. I will note that I've been very impressed with the advocacy of former Energy Secretary Rick Perry. He's a very strong advocate for these treatments and for legalizing these services. He's been a great inspiration for me and for a lot of my clients. With the rise in stress and isolation that we saw coming out of the pandemic measures that put a burden on people in many different ways, there couldn't really be a better time to have these services coming online. They're very healing. They help people, you know, transform themselves in ways that would take years of clinical therapy. The research is very compelling, but I want to focus a little bit on a service center and how they work. A client would come to the center.
Let's acknowledge time, just to, because if we're not careful, it could, it could just could just expand into way into the evening or whatever. into way into the evening or whatever. So I'm just acknowledging time here.
Are you going to submit?
I would just say that the licensing rules are very good and that clients won't, can't get access unless they pass a screening. And they're not there just to get a dose. They're there for, for the treatment.
And what's your address?
Yes, is it, is your?
Oh, my address is thirty-five hundred West Hills Terrace.
West?
In Medford.
Med, okay.
Thank you.
So much. And if you want to submit written testimony, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, you're next.
Hello.
And then I would like to call up Elaine Marshall.
So just acknowledging, I mean, we here, we are here for testimony. As I say, you know, three minutes, you can get a lot of information out, and we'll go till four o'clock now and start at five thirty, and we'll go as long as we need tonight. I'm just acknowledging if everybody adds an extra minute, we'll, it'll just keep expanding. We've got to be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. So my address is one nine six one zero Apache Road, Bend, Oregon, nine.
This is Sarah?
Sarah, yes.
It says Pronghorn Club Drive.
No, 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 sorry, that was, that was a mistaken one. Yeah, that was, this is a correct address.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
But is this what you wrote?
That was a, I, we shouldn't have turned it in. That was a different paper. I can bring you another paper.
Okay.
I apologize.
But your name's Sarah.
Sarah, yes.
Okay, we've got that one.
Yeah, I'll give you another one.
If you want to do a new paper, that would be great.
Sure, I'll bring one in. So my name is Dr. Sarah Betty. I am an emergency medicine physician and a current clinical researcher focused on psychedelic therapies. I have served as a facilitator for the FDA Phase II clinical trial using psilocybin to treat major depressive, depressive disorder. And the FDA has granted breakthrough therapy status to psilocybin, attesting to the promise of the early clinical research potential for treating these serious conditions. I've also worked extensively with veterans suffering from PTSD at the VA. And through a recent collaboration with other researchers at the VA Hospital, we have started a new West Coast VA Center investigating psychedelics to treat mental health disorders with our veterans. We currently have three funded studies at this VA Center, and this comes after a six-decade hiatus with experimental psychedelic therapy and research at the VA. In my twelve years of training to become a doctor, I personally have not seen any medicine with this potential. And I wanted to talk a bit about the promise of these medicines from the perspective of a doctor, a scientist, and someone committed to safe, research-based treatment modalities. And I also want to emphasize the importance of accessibility. When our patients have depression, PTSD, and other mental health issues, they should not and many times cannot physically travel long distances to get accessible healing modalities. First, these medicines have an excellent safety record when used in a correct setting. They also show that they're non-addictive, non-toxic, and virtually impossible to overdose. In research at Johns Hopkins, two doses of the psychedelic psilocybin given with supportive psychotherapy produce rapid and large reduction of depressive symptoms, with half of the study participants no longer having depression at all in the four-week follow-up. Following up some of these patients in the future, they saw that these benefits lasted for a year, and this was only one dose. The magnitude of these effects is about four times larger than anything we've seen in any clinical trial with traditional antidepressants on the market. When we compare this to traditional, anti-depressants standard, we see that this can take months to take into effect and require daily use, whereas psilocybin has the potential to relieve symptoms with just one or two treatments. And we're also seeing incredible promise using these plant medicines for other end-of-life treatments as well.
Okay, your time is up.
Time is up, thank you.
And I do have a question. Where is the new West Coast VA Center that you were referring to?
There, there's one in Portland, and then the West Los Angeles VA Center. So it's a collaboration.
And then Portland?
Yes. Yeah.
Great. And if you do, could you do a new form?
Yes, I'll take care of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it looks like Greg Logan, if you want to come up, and Elaine, thank you so much for joining us.
Hi, thank you. My name is Elaine, and I'm at two five four three Northwest Ivy Way in Redmond. So the path of my life was permanently altered about eight years ago when I discovered the therapeutic powers of psilocybin and other psychedelics to lift lifelong depression and PTSD. In my role of organizing educational events for about four years to raise awareness about psychedelic research, I heard tons of amazing stories of how psilocybin changed lives. Like the guy who was kidnapped and held hostage while traveling in Egypt, leaving him with crippling PTSD that he resolved through psilocybin therapy. Or the professional MMA fighter who began developing early dementia from all his head injuries. He completely recovered his brain health through psilocybin therapy. There was my friend left with severe migraines after brain surgery. Psilocybin therapy was so effective in managing his pain that he started a group teaching other chronic pain sufferers how to use it. There was the young woman who kicked her alcohol addiction and another her bulimia, and the stories go on and on and on. But for every story, there were tons more people who were horrified that to access this therapy, they had to figure out how to buy and use an illegal drug on their own, or as others have mentioned, travel to another country to unknown centers. And these are regular working people, seniors and desperate parents looking for help for their adult sons and daughters. I have a friend with permanent hearing loss from her antidepressant. I had a neighbor who killed himself after starting his antidepressant. I know a young man left with years of debilitating insomnia from withdrawals from his anxiety meds that were prescribed to him starting in high school. Did you know that prescription drugs are the third leading cause of death in the United States? Why, as free Americans, do we only have access to interventions from a multi-billion dollar industry that has a stronghold on the government and the media that has positioned itself above the law and that recently facilitated the greatest transfer of wealth in human history? We have spent the last two years being bludgeoned by the mantra of safe and effective, safe and effective everywhere we turn. Well, I would argue that when it comes to PTSD and other mental health issues, psilocybin is the GOAT of safe and effective compared to what the pharmaceutical industry has to offer. We deserve safe and legal access to proven therapies that historical records shows were malign, was malign decades ago through an orchestrated campaign of disinformation, propaganda, and censorship, ending really legitimate research. It is time to stop letting, to stop letting big industry lord over our lives. It is time to reclaim our sovereign right as Americans to our own health, medical freedom, the use of science that is authentic and not authoritarian and profit-centered. Independent business owners in our community, including women business owners, deserve to use their land in genuine service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you. I noticed you're going to submit testimony, too, so thank you for that.
Can I just put my name inside this?
Sure, thank you so much. Okay, so Greg and Ryan Reed, do you want to come up after Greg is done?
Greg Logan, address is six five seven two nine Old Bend Redmond Highway.
And what city is that?
City of Bend, also in the unincorporated county of Deschutes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, or good afternoon, I should say, and thank you for your time during this very important topic. I've had the privilege to call Deschutes County my home for over a decade. I currently reside in the unincorporated area of Deschutes County, and I'm here to show my support for Measure 109. I'm currently a second-year grad student studying clinical mental health. I represent a new paradigm shift within the behavioral health realm, learning and adopting scientifically proven medicines and protocols such as psilocybin. Psilocybin in conjunction with therapeutic assistance from a licensed professional is shown to treat treatment-resistant depression, anxiety, addiction, cluster headaches, obsessive-compulsive disorder, and PTSD, along with end-of-life anxiety. As a county resident, when I am asked if I would like a service center to be my neighbor, I say yes. I say yes because I support neighbors that are dedicated to personal growth, empathy, transformation, and the betterment of themselves and others. I say yes to clients that visit the neighboring service centers and take the vulnerable step to committing to the work it takes to find relief from PTSD, OCD, depression, and anxiety. I say yes and embrace and support an additional local mental health option that's proven to help heal. I believe Deschutes County has an opportunity to foster and lead the future of mental health options. Our community has voted yes on Measure 109 on November third, 2020, seeking a proven medicine to assist with the struggles and strife our families are experiencing at historic levels. Commissioners, sending this measure back to voters for a second vote simply sweeps it under the rug, forfeiting this time needed to build additional layers of regulation. I implore each commissioner to not opt out and begin working collaboratively with each individual organization and professional in this community. We are here to help. I thank each of, each of you for your dedication and hard work, and I'll leave you with one final thought and reminder that a goal of Deschutes County Commissioners is to promote well-being through behavioral health and community-supported program. I believe, along with fifty-two point eight percent of the voters, agree, Measure 109 will support this vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And you're leaving testimony, too, today?
Yes.
Well, thank you so much. And Stephanie, you'll be our last speaker after Ryan, unless there are more in the room.
Hi, I'm Ryan Reed. My address is eight four eight Northeast Eighth Street here in Bend, Oregon. So Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I am a Deschutes County resident and run a local engineering firm specializing in utility and resource management. Now, in these public sessions, you've heard testimony regarding the benefits of psilocybin therapy and the treatment of depression, PTSD, addiction, and many other mental health issues, testimony backed by both scientific study and personal anecdote. I fully support and agree with these testimonies, so much so that I partnered with other local business owners to launch a psilocybin endeavor here in Deschutes County. I'd like to share our vision for that business with a special focus on land use. So our concept consists of both a psilocybin manufacturing facility and a treatment service center. The manufacturing facility will be five hundred square feet, and that includes mushroom growing, processing, quality assurance, and regulatory controls. This facility will use fewer resources than a single-family home. Negligible water, wastewater, energy, and solid waste. No obnoxious smells, light, or heavy traffic. Think of it as a small workshop with just a couple people working in it. Now, if run at full capacity, this workshop could potentially generate enough psilocybin product to meet the needs of all Deschutes County residents. Now, the service center itself would be about fourteen hundred square feet, consisting of four dedicated session rooms plus common areas, providing one-on-one service. Each room could at most see two people per day. Think of it as a very slow therapist's office. The setting for these sessions is important. Ideally, we are outside the trappings of urban life, away from the noise and anxiety associated with the city, situated in a quiet, remote area surrounded by nature. Windows in the rooms could overlook the mountains. When the weather is nice, a client could recline outside on a secluded patio. Now, we also want this service to be accessible. If we were forced to build this center in Bend, for example, real estate prices will require this to essentially be boutique, high-end spa experience, limiting access to the residents that could benefit from it the most. Placing ourselves in an unincorporated area allows us to lower costs and provide more equitable treatment access for local residents. Now, our facility would be a quiet outpatient center. Other centers could be smaller, such as an existing therapist adding license to their office. Some providers are going to seek to offer multi-day retreats. Now, regardless of the type, the authority lies with you, Commissioners, to regulate these land uses through time, place, and manner restrictions. We are excited to work with you to help develop these regulations. The effectiveness of psilocybin treatment often requires only one or two sessions for a client, and if it was recurring, it might only be once or twice per year. So the physical size and impact on resources is miniscule. The benefits are immense. Attempting to opt out of these services based on land use concerns is disingenuous and denies treatment access to rural residents. Now, on a final note, I'd like to add that access to psilocybin will promote a secondary industry of licensed mental health professionals who are eager to work in this innovative area. So the very presence of psilocybin will increase the number of licensed professionals at large in our community, improving access to mental health services across the board. So thank you for the time, Commissioners, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Thanks for meeting with us early, too.
Thank you, of course.
Appreciate that. And yes, so you won't be submitting anything today?
Thank you very much. No, that's very good.
Thank you. Okay, Stephanie?
Hi, I'm Steph Bars, seven oh six Northwest Ogden in Bend. I'm a registered nurse, a family nurse practitioner, psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner. I'm serving as a member of the Oregon Psilocybin Advisory Board. I hold a certificate as a psychedelic integration therapist. I've lived in Central Oregon since the late nineteen nineties. I'm speaking here today in that frame for myself and in no official capacity, though. For almost twenty years, I've worked in hospice and palliative care with people with life-limiting illnesses. I work with people when they're the most vulnerable. There can be significant distress and even trauma when learning to live with an understanding of advanced illness and a terminal diagnosis. How people make sense and cope varies, and at the end, most people die comfortably. We have multiple ways to treat and relieve people's physical pain. We have an arsenal of medications, therapies, and other behavioral interventions. But there's occasionally some people who seem to suffer differently. They have emotional, spiritual, social, existential distress. Meds don't help these folks. Therapy doesn't help these folks. I believe in the potential benefits of a life-changing psilocybin experience. For some people, using a small amount of psychedelic psilocybin containing mushroom may provide relief from the significant suffering in a way no other treatment's been able to match. Psilocybin services in Oregon is optional. It won't be right for everyone. There's structure and support with experienced guides, facilitation, skilled navigation to make meaning of the experience. It has enormous potential for our residents. Psilocybin offers the opportunity to see and know life and death with a new frame. And with this new frame, there's a possibility to switch from this hyper-focused fear to see and feel with a broader perspective. I know people here who have used psilocybin, feel less depressed, less anxiety. They feel their life has improved. They're able to live more fully. The Oregon Psilocybin Services Act is written to provide this structure and keep the vulnerable safe. It will be administered under controlled, supportive, and supervised settings. There will be specific screenings by licensed facilitators deciding, helping to decide who's the best fit. It's been recommended there's a safety plan for every single individual. The facilitators will be skilled in providing the preparation, thoroughly reviewing informed consent, deciding on the safe dose, and offering integration. And people with advanced illness, I wholly support a more supportive approach. This is in contrast to unsupervised recreational use with unknown drugs and unknown doses. Psilocybin can be safely administered under the guidance provided by OHA. People in rural Deschutes County deserve the opportunity to know relief and improve their quality of life in the face of significant emotional existential distress. Marginalized, including those in rural population, should have equal access. Limiting land use limits access. The voters have already made their decision. The program's safe to improve quality of life for our central Oregon community. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Look at that timing. Great job.
And you will be submitting documents, so thank you.
Thank you.
That was, okay. Now, do we have anyone else in the room that would like to provide testimony at this moment in time? Okay, all right, so Stephanie, let's go and see if there's anyone on Zoom that is raising their hand to participate. Okay, okay. So to remind you, you will be elevated to panelist. Audio is going to be unmuted. And please leave your name and your address. Okay, Mr. Arnold? Have you, yes, he's unmuted. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. My name's Mike Arnold. I'm an Oregon attorney over here in Layton County. So I'm, I don't really have a dog in the fight over in Deschutes County other than my conscience guiding me to help advocate for access to more folks.
For the public record, we need your address.
Sure, six two five zero Astor Street, Springfield, Oregon.
Thank you.
And I, I wanted to, I wanted to speak a little bit about, as an operator of a psilocybin service center in Jamaica with plans in Oregon. And I'm hoping that you allow our potential, I guess, competitors to have a shot in Deschutes County. I don't have any particular properties. I'm looking at in your guys' neck of the woods. I hope that there's lots of these, and the free market wins the day, and it suppresses prices so people can get access to this medicine as quickly and inexpensively as possible. I founded Silo Wellness in two thousand and eighteen. We're the, we're Oregon's only publicly traded psychedelics company. We currently offer psychedelic retreats in Jamaica with psilocybin and five M E O D M T. And I wanted just to be available if you guys have any questions regarding how these retreats are operated or the community impact. I testified at the Layton County Board of Commissioners meeting yesterday, and I compared, I compared psilocybin retreats, like, impact to like what you would see from like a yoga center or a bunch of ladies doing a quilting party. I mean, it's pretty, pretty mellow, and it's very silent at times, and it's about introspection. And there's a need for it to be in communion with nature. We call this unity medicine. We call this unity medicine, in that it unites your mind, body, and spirit, also unites you to nature. I mean, we've got to keep in mind that human consciousness is the most complicated thing ever to evolve out of nature, more complicated than a black hole. And to go back to nature allows folks to really center themselves and get a lot of relief. And so our retreats in Jamaica are centered around nature. Yes, we do two deep dive psilocybin sessions, and it's sort of a bigger microdose along with yoga. But most of the time, you know, folks are out there doing hiking. And you might not know this, but Deschutes County has actually had a part of a legal psychedelic retreat already, because I held the United States' first legal psychedelic retreat with ketamine, based in Lane County for lodging, where we did the deep dive ketamine sessions, and then we went on hiking all over the place. We did, went up past McKenzie Pass, you know, D. Wright Observatory. So I guess technically, we wandered over to Deschutes County and did some hiking. And the impact was, you know, pretty low, just as low as any other hikers. And what I want to see is folks to be able to have lodging and be able to really, really work hard on themselves without having to be commuted back and forth to a white wall doctor's office or to a hotel, and to be close to their therapist and close to the medicine and close to nature.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. If you care to email some in, please know that we would appreciate receiving that, too.
Thank you for sharing.
What email address works? What is it on?
What? Info? What's your send to?
Probably board@deschutes.org would be a great email address.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Okay.
Thank you.
Sam Chapman, yes. Would you please identify yourself and your address? Thank you, Sam.
Yes. Hi, Commissioners. My name is Sam Chapman. For the record, my address is 8110 Southeast Ramona Street in Portland, Oregon. I simply wanted to thank all of the local advocates for showing up today. I'm sure you'll be hearing from more later this evening, and I will simply yield my time back. I'm happy to be here as a technical resource on the measure itself, the currently codified rules, or the rules that are being in process of being codified, and any other questions that you may have. Thank you for your time. I yield back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Cameron Meeks, please. We are unmuting you now, so please give us your address.
All right. My address is 2714 Northwest Savior Street, Portland, Oregon, 97210. And I am a member of the Rules Advisory Committee on Products and Testing, or the early phase of the Rules Advisory Committee. And I am a commercial mycologist for the last 18 years and have constructed upwards of 10 different laboratories and 10 different production locations specifically for medicinal and gourmet mushrooms, primarily in Oregon. And I've been an Oregon resident my entire life. And I just wanted to step in and comment specifically on concerns pertaining to the facilities themselves and what people perceive as, you know, an excessive use of resources. The resource use within these facilities, depending upon size, are going to be extremely minimal on water, materials for growth medium, as well as electricity. Aside from that, there will be no eyesore, as a, you know, concern seems to come up often with cannabis as being a comparative. And aside from that, the production spaces themselves will also be limited in scale and scope by virtue of the demand that's present in the counties in question or in the state in question. I think that there's a lot of misunderstanding regarding how cultivation functions, and by virtue of that, I'd be happy to make myself accessible to explain those systems. I've run a business for the last 10 years specifically in nutritional supplements, as well as consultation for setting up farms. And yeah, I really want to see this move forward, and I don't want there to be any naive perception of what a facility may look like or function as inside of smaller communities, because I have spent a lot of time in Southern Oregon, as my hometown is Ashland, and it is difficult to see the impacts of the cannabis industry on a small community. And I really have concerns that, in fact, a lot of people think that this is somehow going to be like that, or there's going to be public access of psilocybin, which is not the case. I mean, everything within this, and I've, you know, been in the process of the rulemaking or rules advisory, and it's going to be controlled end-to-end in very careful manners. And the amount of people that have spent time thinking about this and planning around this to ensure that it's impeccably structured is substantial. And I think that it will go very well and support a lot of different people. So yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. My expertise specifically is in cultivation and even the land use of cultivation. So if there's anything I can do with respect to that, I'd be happy to help.
Okay. Thank you, Cameron, for joining us today.
Thank you.
So Stephanie, do we have someone else? Hi. Good afternoon, Barb. If you could identify your address, please, and yourself. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yes, thank you. My name is Barb Hanson. I reside at 25989 Southwest Nicole Drive in Corvallis, Oregon, and I have a work address in Merrillhurst, Oregon. If you need that, you can let me know. So I'm an RN with over 35 years of experience working in hospice in Oregon. I currently serve as the CEO of the Oregon Hospice and Palliative Care Association, which is a statewide public benefit organization helping to ensure Oregonians have access to high-quality hospice and palliative care as they near the end of life. And although I also serve on the Oregon Psilocybin Advisory Board, as Steph Bars also does, I'm testifying today in my role with the Oregon Hospice and Palliative Care Association. I work with all of the hospice and palliative care programs in Deschutes County, and your county is home to some really stellar programs that provide care for many hundreds of county residents each year. My purpose in testifying today is to respectfully ask you to consider the needs of seriously and terminally ill residents when you discuss prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and service center operators within unincorporated Deschutes County. I have never personally taken psilocybin, but I know there have been studies done at Johns Hopkins and NYU, as well as other locations, showing really promising results about the benefits of psilocybin in improving symptoms of depression and anxiety. The improvements after even a single treatment can last for many months. I know more studies will be done, but the results already show the possible benefits for persons who will need palliative or hospice care. Please allow them to access this promising treatment. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
I got a question for Barb. Thank you very much for joining us. Is there a difference between kind of the in-facility care and needing to go somewhere else? You know, in a hospice setting, somebody could be in their own home or a facility, or there's these other retreat-type things we're talking about.
Right. The majority of hospice care in Oregon and the whole country, over 90%, is provided in a person's home or place of residence. The statute doesn't allow people to receive psilocybin at home, so palliative care and hospice patients would need to go to a service center to receive the administration under the very careful rules that I've been participating with the Advisory Board over the past year and a half.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So they do have to go to a service center then? Okay. Thank you. All right. Our next person, it looks like it's Allison. Allison, would you care to identify yourself and your address, please? And thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk, and thank you for being here to hear testimony on this important matter. My name's Allison Hoen Garden. My address is 61839 Dobbin Road here in Bend. I've lived in Bend for 20 years. I'm an attorney who does a fair amount of land use and real estate work. I served on the Marijuana Advisory Committee for the rulemaking for Deschutes County, and I think I have a good perspective of some of what the concerns of a lot of our constituents, a lot of the members in this community share. And specifically with marijuana, there were some other issues. I think, gosh, the testimony that we've heard already today has been very powerful and very informative. I think from safety standpoint, from the ability for this measure to do a lot of good for our community. I also sit on the Advisory Committee for Affordable Housing for the City of Bend currently, and there's a lot of crossover between affordable housing and mental health and somehow some of these programs come together. I currently, I feel like we have a mental health crisis in our community, and this is one measure that will ultimately help members of this community if it is something that we can continue to learn about and regulate safely, trusting the committees and all the scientists and the providers and the people that are putting rules together to make this a legitimate and helpful therapy for the community. I think that I would like to recommend that you don't ask the community again about opting out, because I think based on even just what I'm seeing today, I haven't heard any objections. I think there's a lot of people in our community that really support this and want to hear more about what it's going to look like, and I'd rather spend our energy on formulating safe, effective solutions for the community to implement what the voters have already agreed they'd like to see. I understand the safety concerns. I understand some of the things that probably are looming in the background. I think this kind of treatment, from the stories that I've heard, from literature that I've read, and the people that I've talked to, this is a very quiet, isolated, cushioned, compassionate kind of therapy that I think won't have the negative environmental or land use or societal impact that some other things have brought to our attention. So anyway, I just want to put my voice out there, support all that has been said before, and encourage us to be the welcoming community that we are in Deschutes County for all members at all levels that may need this care.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay. Stephanie, do we have someone else? Samantha? Samantha Georgie?
I'm here. Hold on, I'm getting my video turned on.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Samantha Georgie, and I live at 16795 South Century Drive in the center of our area. I'm a master student in the Clinical Mental Health Program at Oregon State University, and I'm here today to request that the voice of the people throughout Deschutes County be honored in their original decision to pass Measure 109, and that the democratic process be honored by not disregarding that vote in hopes of a different answer. I have chosen clinical mental health as my course of study to become a licensed professional counselor and be part of the solution of the current mental health crisis in our state. Oregon has the highest rate of depression in the nation, with 25% of the population suffering. Studies by Johns Hopkins researchers have shown that psilocybin treatment has relieved major depressive disorder symptoms in adults for up to one month. A follow-up study of those participants showed that the substantial antidepressant effects of psilocybin, paired with supportive therapy, have lasted at least one year. To date, there is no known pharmaceutical shown to have this level of efficacy in depression treatment that can be used at such infrequent intervals. Because of the significance of the aforementioned findings, the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs has launched clinical trials to measure the effectiveness of psilocybin in the treatment of PTSD, and the FDA has, of course, already approved psilocybin as a breakthrough therapy for treatment-resistant depression. Le Pine has a high veteran population, higher veteran population than most regions of the nation at 9.6%. And Deschutes County has one of the lowest patient to mental health care provider ratios in the state at 240 to 1. Several colleagues, along with myself, were drawn to begin careers in mental health, in part because of the passing of Measure 109 and the access to a more natural treatment of depression, for depression with less side effects. I imagine even more mental health practitioners will be drawn to our county should psilocybin service centers be an available resource throughout the county. As a resident of unincorporated land in Deschutes County, putting this initiative to vote could directly negatively impact myself, my future practice, and my community. With the proven effectiveness of this medicine, it would be morally remiss to chance depriving the residents of the unincorporated areas of Deschutes County of access to this important resource. We are all well aware of the cost of living and property in Bend. Should these services be only available within city limits, the population that may benefit most from them will likely be priced out of these services and at least be disproportionately burdened, with transportation logistics leading to inequitable access. I understand that this may seem an appealingly divisive topic to take aside on in an election year. However, considering the mental health crisis in our state, now is not the time to neglect the science behind this medicine and take a risk of depriving those desperately in need of relief. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will keep our best interests in mind and honor the voice of the people by honoring this county's decision to pass Measure 109.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you so much. Okay. Lena Berry?
Yes, I am here. One second. Getting it going. Thank you for having me today. I would like to say that I am against limiting the...
Lena, do you mind giving us your address for the public record, please?
Sure. My name is Lena. I'm at 839 Southwest Cascade Ave in Redmond, Oregon. I am against limiting the land use. I believe it removes access for our most vulnerable people and veterans in general, chronic medical patients who need this care. It is a hope, and it is a last resort hope for a lot of us. We've heard from our veterans. We've heard from our medical professionals. The Measure 109 was passed in a general election in 2020, which has the higher turnout than any of the primary or special elections, and it was approved by a margin of 6,000 votes, which is pretty big for us. So I just would like to say, we want help getting these up and running quickly so we don't have more suicides and so that more people have this access to this help. We do not want to add more roadblocks. So if you want to put any vote on the ballot, how about approving care for the palliative and hospice care patients as opposed to removing access to unincorporated Deschutes County? So thank you very much for your time. Again, I am in agreement with everyone else here. Please don't throw up any more roadblocks to this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for testifying. Okay. Okay, Prima? And if you could give us your address for the public record, please?
Yes, my name is Prima Sagara. My address is 3500 West Hills Terrace in Medford. And I've been working with psilocybin for the last 20 years. I have been a professional psilocybin facilitator for the last four years. And while I do not claim to diagnose, treat, or cure any disease, I have seen firsthand clients who have taken psilocybin experience total resolution of their substance use disorders with no relapse even years later. And I've seen all of the results that the veterans have spoken of here, amongst many other benefits, as the studies have demonstrated. I, our team is opening a psilocybin services center in Oregon, and we employ a number of professionals, including licensed professional counselors. We also employ a professional psilocybin cultivator, and I specifically would like to speak to that, because I've been able to witness firsthand what a cultivation looks like. Our process uses no more than 15 gallons per four pounds of finished product. So if we're lucky, you know, the state will set limits that will be very reasonable, which I anticipate they're doing very scientifically. I can tell you that a large steel grow might produce, you know, 30 pounds a month, if we're lucky, in which case the water use would be around, or that would be every eight weeks. The growth cycle is six to eight weeks, and that would use around 140 gallons of water. So that's quite miniscule. The energy consumption's also very small. Cultivation center would use no more resources than a single-family dwelling. The mushrooms grow in the dark, so climate control's really the only energy use, and that's minimal, because it's at a reasonable, normal temperature. and that's minimal because it's at a reasonable, normal temperature. So we anticipate that people will come to find the truth, which is that there's minimal environmental impact with energy use and water use. And, you know, there's no, there's no smells. No one will likely know that their cultivation center is operating. It is very incognito. There's no real waste. You can create closed loop systems where everything you use stays within your operation. And, you know, there's, there's no tox, there's no toxic ingredients needed. Our process is completely organic, so we don't use pesticides. So there's, there's no concern about chemicals entering the environment. So thank you for your time and consideration.
No, thank you so much for your testimony, Prima.
You're welcome.
Okay. Kevin S. Okay, Kevin, if you would identify yourself, please, and your address. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad I could do, do this. I have COVID right now, so I'll try and speak clearly as possible. Kevin Shaw, 3141 Northeast Delma Street, Bend, Oregon. I want to thank each of the Commissioners for calling me back. I appreciate that. That meant a lot. Angie and I, my wife and I, started Brightways Counseling Group. We're the largest provider of mental health services in central Oregon. We operate in Jefferson County, Crook County, and Deschutes County. We employ 65 people. This year, we were, we were, we won Small Business Association Businessperson of the Year for Oregon 2022. And so here I am in the middle of this, listening to this. And I did not know that the general election had already approved Measure 109. So I'm a little confused as to why we're going to revote on this issue. But I did want to support what everybody has said. I'm in this as a counselor. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and a certified alcohol and drug counselor. And I've, I've done, I've done all kinds of different therapy. And I can tell you what this does is, is it, it allows the processing part of therapy to happen at lightning speed. So I won't spend a lot of time on, on the benefits of that as everybody else has. But I do want to point out that this is, this particular measure is so unique because it's scientifically driven. There's not a money initiative here. And so to stop this, really, the only reason why you would stop this and, believe me, opting out of some, you know, unincorporated property everywhere, it sends a negative message. That's really what this is about. And, and so putting up obstacles and saying, hey, I think we're going to limit this, limit that, that's, that's, we've already decided this, so I'm, I'm super confused. But the thing that's unique about this is scientifically driven. I mean, there's no money interest in this. And we're talking about Johns Hopkins, all these other places. I mean, there's, there's just researches. And I think that it's unfortunate that the marijuana industry got here first because I think that has left a bad taste in our mouths. I mean, you drive down the road and you smell the, you know, you smell it. And it just, you know, we looked at buying property and decided not to because we were worried that they're going to be growing pot over there, and it just was not a good experience. But this is different. The other thing is, is that Jeffs, I see the voting record here, and Crook County and Jefferson County voted against 109 when they added up the numbers, but Deschutes voted for it. So what happens is if Crook opts out, and Jefferson opts out, and now Deschutes opts out, that's a huge, huge loss to our community. And so as a businessperson, as a counselor, and as a business owner here in central Oregon, I'm really, really hoping that we'll do the right thing here and do what we've already asked to be done, and that's to make this thing happen. I appreciate all you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you so much for joining us.
Kevin, just a little bit of clarity. There's land use jurisdiction. So we represent the rural lands of Deschutes County for, for private lands. There's also Ben Redmond Sisters in Lepine, who are not speaking for them today. Did he go away, or?
I'm still here.
Oh, good, yeah. So we just switched the video. Oh, there we go, I see. And, but so it's not stopping the whole project. So I guess I'll share a little bit more information with folks here. We don't have rules about what a land use compatibility might be, conditional uses. You know, there's grand visions, and it was shared with us a little bit today about what a spectacular retreat center would look like. But if we were to process this through a land use, you know, code update package, conditional use discussion, it would take a year. So now we're in this, this situation where the people voted a year and a half ago. Rules are being put in place. The measure says licenses shall be provided on the first workday of the next year. And we don't even have facts about what, what do these things look like. So I'm just letting you know that we're not making up the fact that we're trying just to be against something. We don't have information that might be prudent to making reasonable decisions about land use. So just giving you a little bit more information about what I'm seeing.
And the other thing, even though Jefferson and Crook County voted against it, all counties are assumed part of it unless they opt out. So yes, all 36 counties are assumed part.
And these are the facts that we all need to understand. So hopefully, we're going to get a good, a good set of, a good body of knowledge that we all have here, and then we'll move it to the next level about, okay, where, where is the treatment center? What does production look like? What is the facility going to, going to be?
And thank you so much, Kevin.
Since all of the Commissioners are making comments, I guess I'd also like to say a lot of the uncertainty around what the land use impacts of Measure 109 implementation are going to be, do revolve around land use and this, this rulemaking process. And we have actually heard from a couple of people who are engaged in the rulemaking, the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. One of them, Sam Chapman, actually offered to elaborate, speak more about that if we were interested in that. And he ceded his time earlier. So I, I actually would be interested in, at the, you know, at the point where everyone has had their first opportunity to speak today, to circle back to that and to ask Sam Chapman to use some of the, the time that he ceded to unpack for us what's happening with that rulemaking process. Because it is, it's really important background information to evaluate whether it's appropriate to be referring an opt-out ballot measure to the voters or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang. Thanks for that good point. I believe Amanda, you're next, and could you please identify yourself with your address?
Thank you, Kevin.
Hello, I'm starting my video. Hi, my name is Amanda Gao. I live at 21172 Southeast Azalea Avenue, Bend, Oregon 97702. This is baby Alice. We're in the middle of snack, but she's very supportive of the democratic process. We just wanted to reiterate what a lot of people have said recently about, you know, the access to service. I personally have spent the last 15 years working in service of Deschutes County with JMRJU Services, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Guardian Group. I've worked with families and youth for the last 15 years at the leadership executive level. And I know how restrictive access can be in getting people services. And I just truly believe that restricting where these treatment facilities can be will hinder people who truly need help getting access. So I have also recently decided to pivot my career. I was accepted to a clinical mental health program. So staying home with her while I pursue my degree. And one of the reasons I was drawn to this field is because of the innovative and creative things that are going on in Oregon. I know that not all of the patients I see will want to seek these services, but I'm excited for those who do have treatment-resistant depression, anxiety, PTSD, you know, serious drug addiction can access these sorts of services. And I really want to be able to continue my career in Deschutes County in central Oregon. I feel this is my home. Like I said, I was born and raised here, and so is my daughter. I want to raise her in central Oregon as well. So I think that I just really want to speak to this will bring additional mental health support to our community. And Tony, to speak to what you just were talking about with land use, like, I think that pulling this back onto the ballot and trying to get another vote is just regressive. And is what we want to be is progressive. We want to help serve our community, want to honor our voters wishes. We want to be able to provide support to those. I mean, you heard testimony today that honestly had me almost in tears. These are the sorts of people that desperately need services. And putting this back on the ballot is only going to hinder or at least slow down people being able to safely access service. So I appreciate your time. Alice and I really do support the work that you all are doing, and we are so thankful that you're taking this seriously. But I think from what everybody and you've seen today is that there is a ton of support from just a wide, wide group of people. So thank you for your consideration, and I will hope to see you at another time.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Alice, and thank you, Amanda. And I'm, I'm glad to know that you have chosen a field that truly needs more, more people like you in it. So thank you for doing that. Do we have anyone else, Stephanie? Okay. Yes, Jahan, if you would introduce yourself and your address, please. Thank you so much for joining us.
Absolutely. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for having me. My name's Jahan Khamsazadeh. I live at 3500 Seminary Ave. in Oakland, California. And to share a little bit about myself while I'm here speaking, I did my doctoral dissertation work on psilocybin mushrooms. A few months ago, it was published as a book called The Psilocybin Connection: Psychedelics, the Transformation of Consciousness, and Evolution of the Planets. It's published by North Atlantic Books. It just came out on Audible this last weekend. And aside from my academic work on psilocybin, I've taken several multi-year trainings on mushrooms, including within the Mazatzek Mushroom Tradition in Wahaqah. And they've been using mushrooms for thousands of years. And I think they're a good model to show how safely mushrooms can be integrated into culture. I also live in Oakland, where we have decriminalized all natural psychedelics, and I testified in court there. And what we've seen in almost three years since the past is that there's been no negative impacts. Mushrooms, mushrooms tend to help people feel more at peace with themselves and each other. I've assisted and worked with four different psychedelic, assisted psychotherapy trainings. And I also lead legal psilocybin ceremonies in Jamaica. They've been a part of my life for 20 years. I've read 75 books on them, and I've seen hundreds of people go through journeys. What I've seen, which mirrors the last 20 years of research, is unparalleled healing in areas of depression, anxiety, addiction, and OCD. And say these persons successful in treatment-resistant depression. Now, I've worked with many people, including lawyers and doctors, who are on the edge of suicide because of the pain and depression in their lives. They'd exhausted all conventional routes, including pharmaceutical medicines and therapies, and were at their edge. And it's not an overstatement to say that this medicine has saved lives. It's been that case for myself. Also, previously being suicidal and depressed as a teen, I give all the credit. That's why I'm here now. As people have probably shared, it's one of the most biologically safest compounds on the planet, almost no biotoxicity. So under the right setting, it poses no risk and brings incomparable healing. That just means that there needs to be trained professionals involved. People should not be left unsupervised. With the adequate preparation and integration, there is no evidence that shows this poses a risk to community. And in fact, it helps people feel connected to ourselves, each other, and the planet. And that is my statement that I have written for today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for testifying today.
Thank you for sharing.
For taking the time. We appreciate it.
It's an honor. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, Stephanie? Looks like we have Joe is available. Good afternoon, Joe. Could you identify yourself and your address, please?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for this opportunity. So my name is Joe Zymans. I'm at 57448 Quartz Mountain Lane in beautiful Sun River, Oregon. And I'm the co-owner of an outpatient counseling practice group. Prior to that, I was a chief operating officer for a nonprofit where we focused on providing programs and services, developed out of research of the brain and the mind, including things like meditation and mindfulness and other training programs focused around mental health and well-being. So I've been professionally in this world for quite some time. I've also done some advocacy work around children's mental health, sat on executive council for a state-based organization. A lot of our work was focused on improving access to care and services, realizing that we need as many tools in the toolbox as possible. And like a lot of us here, and many who have spoken so eloquently today, I've dealt with some challenges at times throughout my life. And so personally, and I'm here to speak personally, I've benefited from things like talk therapy, from traditional medication, antidepressants, meditation and mindfulness, which is, I think, a big, a big thing that's super helpful. I've also been through a plant-based medicine experience, psilocybin therapy, a single-dose experience under the direction of this wonderful experience facilitator. My experience was one where there was a lot of preparation work beforehand, and then there was a lot of integration work on the backend. It was a very well-organized and structured program that I was part of. And I can say personally, having, again, benefited from several of the tools in the toolbox, my psilocybin therapy experience has been that, one that's been as impactful, if not more, than anything else that I've been through. So I'm here because I, when I think about anxiety, depression, all the other health challenges that are skyrocketing, really across the board, but including within our county and our communities, we need to have all the tools in the toolbox as possible to help. And we need to provide access to all of those tools, to as many as we can within our communities. Those tools have provided me with a lot of health benefits. And yet I'm a middle-aged white male, privileged with access to services that aren't yet available to, to others. And I would really like to see that widen throughout our communities. It's a primary reason why we voted to support psilocybin therapy in our state and here in Deschutes County. So I ask that you support our communities by allowing psilocybin therapy to be used as a much-needed tool in that mental health toolbox. Our residents here really need access to as many services as possible. And, and you really have the opportunity here to ensure that that happens. So thank you so much for your time.
I do have one question, Joe. When you did have your one plant-based experience, who did you say it was under, it was extremely well organized, but who was responsible for it?
This was a, it was a private facilitator.
Was it in Oregon, then?
It was actually out of state. It was not in Oregon, but it was in the U.S.
Okay, in the United States. So, okay, thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Okay, did you say there's anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you, Stephanie. We were going to go back to Sam, I believe, in a bit after we'd gone through everyone else. Okay, they didn't come back. Are there any phone calls on that we should recognize at this moment before we go to Sam? Okay, no phone calls then. Okay, Sam. We would love to hear from you some more, if you don't mind, if you have time at this moment to just share with us what you've been working on and let us know where you think things are at.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Commissioners, again. My name is Sam Chapman. For the record, I was the campaign manager for Measure 109, and I now serve as the executive director of the Healing Advocacy Fund, which has been working on all things implementation for this program. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the Commissioners may have. I did want to speak to one item, Commissioner DeBonne, that you had brought up as it relates to what rules that may be in process that relate to land use. The short answer is there are none. The land use considerations that exist are in the statute itself. And beyond that, there are not going to be any considerations that have been discussed or that will be discussed related to land use within the time, place, and manner type of decision-making tree. So that is something that is going to be purely up to you. I think that a lot of the testimony here that was provided today, some of the more technical testimony that helps kind of paint the picture as to what these facilities might look like accurately starts to really not only paint that picture, but I believe also answers some, if not all, of those questions. But I just wanted- But I just wanted to highlight that the state is not going to be weighing in anywhere close to anything that would deal with time, place, and manner. That is absolutely at your prerogative. And that was the thing that I wanted to speak directly to. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions if you have any.
Could I tag off of that? So, Sam, I think, and I believe that some of this ties back to the experience with recreational marijuana, but here in Deschutes County, there is a perception that the measure language leaves a lot very open. We are allowed to do time, place, and manner regulations, but if we substantially narrow, narrow from what the measure says, there's a belief that we are open to significant legal challenge. And so, that creates kind of a paradox where, you know, where people are saying, you're empowered to do time, place, and manner restrictions, but we don't really, but there's also this kind of fear that if we, if we come up with time, place, and manner restrictions, that they will be challenged and they will, you know, land us in a whole bunch of legal drama. I do think that, you know, if you look at the experiences of Deschutes County legally surrounding recreational marijuana, there were the concerns that were raised around the time, place, and manner restrictions that the county did come up with were, you know, in my opinion, there were some fair legal critiques of, you know, the arbitrariness of those time, place, and manner restrictions that the county put forward at first. So, you know, it's complicated to figure out how to navigate that. I mean, so, I guess for me, one of the questions is, if we come forward with time, place, and manner restrictions on things like scale of facilities, you know, if we are reasonable and fair, do we think that those time, place, and manner regulations will actually stand up, you know, to public scrutiny or legal challenge? Or if we significantly narrow this, you know, the scope of what's possible from what, you know, from what was put forward in the ballot measure, are we just signing up for a whole bunch of trouble?
Richard Chang, thank you for the question. It's an excellent question, and I think you hit the nail on the head in that it can be, at times, and certainly was and may still be, within the cannabis context, a tough hill to climb to determine what would be reasonable or not, right? That often is the question, is what is reasonable? And I think an example of what isn't reasonable could be, if you were to put a buffer in which service centers have to be 2,000 feet away from a library, but 1,500 feet within a police department, and the library and the police department are right next to each other, that would be unreasonable. That's actually an example from a vocality in which I will not name in this meeting that we've seen in other types of sensitive uses. That clearly was not reasonable, right? And I think it's, it's tough, you know? I'm not an attorney, and this is not to be considered as legal advice, but I do believe that should the county decide to allow these businesses to operate, which I believe they should, and should the county be willing to work with the people that are looking to license businesses, I think that's wholly avoidable. In terms of understanding what their needs are, understanding, you know, if they are, you know, looking to do a service center that if you were to prohibit all commercial properties from a service center from locating, that would probably be unreasonable. And so, I think that between working with the community, understand what their needs are and where, you know, it's where they're thinking about placing these businesses, that can be navigated in unison with the community to avoid any type of issues that would be considered, you know, legally sticky. I think it's when meetings are held without the input of the community, which is often where the expertise lives, as you can tell as an example by a lot of the testimony that was given today. I learned some things as well. That really can help prevent those types of things from happening from a legal perspective. So, I'm not sure if that fully answers your question, but I do think that it is absolutely avoidable. And I think by having these types of dialogues that you've invited today is a really good step in that direction.
Thank you. Well, if the other Commissioners don't have additional questions, Sam, I would, I would like just kind of an overview of the rulemaking process, you know, kind of where it's at, what the key things that the rulemaking committee is working on? If they're not working on land use questions, kind of, what's going on there?
Yeah, thank you. So, as I believe the Commissioners, and I'm sure a lot of folks in the audience know, we gave ourselves two years to develop the rules and regulations for this program. We are now a year and a half through that process. The Psilocybin Advisory Board just submitted their final recommendations to the Oregon Health Authority for rules. That is the second set of recommendations. They had submitted a first set of recommendations dealing with testing, training requirements, and products, because those were three areas that rules needed to be expedited for if services are ever to be utilized in 2023. And actually, this reminds me, I wanted to provide another point of clarification. On January 2, 2023, the Oregon Health Authority must make applications available for licensure. That is not to be confused with when services will be realized and doors will be open. It will be some significant amount of time after that for applications to be reviewed, revised, approved, property to be found, vetted, built out, up to code, making sure it's in line with whatever additional GPMs the county may provide, et cetera. And so, that's, that's a big part of that process. So, the advisory board and its second draft recommendation or recommendations that they sent to the Oregon Health Authority really dig into, you know, ensuring safety at the end of the day. The foundation of this program is truly built on safety and ensuring that those who are seeking services have everything they need to safely access and benefit from psilocybin services. So, you know, there are, you know, those recommendations are now public and available on the Oregon Health Authority's website. And if there are any specific issues, I don't, I could sit here and talk a book at you about everything that has been going on, but if there are other specific items that you're curious about, I'd be happy to speak to them briefly and also would be happy to follow up in much more greater detail, just to be sensitive on the time that we have here.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions right now.
A specific item might be to, and I think I was talking to a few people in preparation for this, get to a concept of what, and I already mentioned this, you know, if we were to put a proposed code package together, put some reasonable, some things on a piece of paper that some people think are reasonable, discuss it, put it in front of the planning commission, have a hearing in front of the Commissioners, put a land use in place, either by emergency or have a 90-day, you know, window where it becomes, that's most of a year. And we don't even have that now. So, six months from now is when those licenses, is there a way to set up where we can work through that process into next year?
Yes, there is. Excellent question. Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne. I believe that, you know, the first item in which a prospective licensee will have to go through that involves both the OHA licensing process and the local government process is the land use compatibility statement, or also known as the LUX statement, right? We actually know the Oregon Health Authority is working on developing this right now. It's not going to be a big homework assignment. I think that they're literally just going to design the form. It's pretty straightforward. I'm sure your planning department is more than familiar with it. And I think that, you know, that is one of the boxes that needs to be checked. And you will have time, you know, if you decide to not opt out, you have the time to develop your time, place, and manner regulations. And so, I do think that while, you know, that may take some time, I think that there's a way to do that simultaneously while the program is getting up and running as well. And a lot of that is really just being transparent and communicating with the community that's going to be seeking these licenses, right? As you can tell from the showing today, there's a lot of interest from community members locally that want to be able to provide and receive these services. And I think that, you know, if the process takes a little bit longer because you want to really nail down the planning side of it, if they're engaged, they'll probably be happy with that. As opposed to not having communication with them and not really understanding what their needs are and then having gaps and then having to go back, which would prolong the process even more. I do think that there's ways to simultaneously do both.
So, Sam, I have a question. You're saying that the applications will be available, what, the second day of January 23? But when do you think that they'll complete the rulemaking? Is that, is that going to be in August, do you think? Are they going to have the rulemaking done before end of year? That's what we're worried about, because it seemed like, heard, you know, there were meetings that were canceled, postponed, whatever, for the last, you know, period of time. And just wondering, how does it look to you as someone who's intimately involved in the process? Do you have any insight into that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Commissioner, Derek, for the question. We will see a draft, a set of final draft rules, I believe, in the next six to eight weeks here. And I think that we can look to the Psilocybin Advisory Board recommendations and feel confident that a majority of the rules that will be adopted will be from the recommendations. We, why can we be confident about that? Because that's what happened in the first round of rules, right? The Psilocybin Advisory Board, you know, has been working incredibly hard. There are hundreds of hours of meetings, testimony from experts from not just across the state, but across the country and around the world on every single subject and more that has been touched on here today. So, this, these recommendations are not just, we feel and think this, therefore, we're recommending it. They went through a serious process. They were vetted by experts, state agencies weighed in. You know, it was a very thoughtful and intentional process. And so, you know, I think the fact that we decided to take, you know, two years to do this is also representative of how seriously we take the responsibility of setting up this program to be safe, accessible, and something that can really help people. And so, you know, I do think that the drafts, rules that the OHA will be publishing over the coming, you know, month or two here will essentially, you know, be able to answer most, if not all, of the additional questions that may remain at that time.
So, in your opinion, then, you're thinking by September 15th that the rules should be final?
No. The rules will not be codified by the Oregon Health Authority until, you know, towards the end of the year. But again, 80% to 90% of the recommendations that the board is making have been accepted by the Oregon Health Authority, and we expect that to continue to be the case. The areas where there may be difference are going to be in relation to, you know, things that, you know, I think there may be still discussion on. But again, that's going to be a very short list. And I think that at the end of the day, we have a really good picture of what this program is and what it is not at the end of the day.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? Stephanie? Oh, okay, great. Thank you so much. Allison? Yes, Allison, please, you're being unmuted. Would you identify your first and last name and your address? And you're given three minutes for testimony. Thank you for joining us. Unmuted? Unmuted? Thank you.
So close.
I know. It's like, well, we're almost there. It looks like she's unmuted. Maybe, Allison, would you mind reconnecting? It's not, we can't hear you at the moment. Thanks, Stephanie. Did you try it again? Should we ask her to, well, let's see if it works this time? Okay. Allison, if you can hear me, why don't you disengage from this contact and come back in or even call us? And you can give us your comments over the phone, if that's possible. Do we have a number?
There should be a number listed.
Okay.
I will double-check that that's.
Okay, yes. Just, Allison, if you just want to call in, we do definitely want to hear from you. We just can't hear you today with the connection. All right, so it looks, Phoenix, please? Yes. Thank you so much. We need to unmute you now. Sorry. There you go. I hope it works.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name is Phoenix Van Tassel. I'm known around town by Bobby. I am employed by City of Bend, and the reason that I say that is just because I want to destigmatize this medicine. I appreciate everyone else who's come on here to comment. I have personally worked with this medicine over the past three years in a very professional setting.
Phoenix, do you mind giving us your address, please?
Sure.
First and last name and address.
I'm at 20645 Couples Lane, Bend, Oregon, 97702.
Okay, thank you.
So, I've been working with this medicine for the past three years, and it has helped me cure some OCD that I've dealt with since I was 10 years old. I had been in and out of therapy since I was 10, trying to find a way to overcome this ailment that I'd been struggling with. And, you know, it wasn't until I had the opportunity to sit with these medicines in a professional setting that I was able to, that my brain was able to make the connections to truly help me solidify that healing. And I believe that this medicine is for everyone. And I'm really, really proud of our state to see where it's gone with Measure 109, and I appreciate everyone who's worked towards that. And I know that we'll make the right decision here, and I'm, thank you for allowing me to comment and to share my story.
Thank you for joining us today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did Allison call in?
The technology's working pretty darn good.
You just never know, do you? Okay.
Good. Well, thank you, everybody, for staying with us. Really interesting. Getting information out on the table in the, you know, public discussion is the goal here right now so we can make a good, you know, an informed decision about the big picture.
Commissioners, perhaps while there's a downtime here, we could clarify. You've indicated a couple of times that people could submit additional information, so I'm assuming then you're going to hold the written record open after the hearing tonight closes.
Right.
You want to pick a date on that? You're going to need to deliberate and make a decision next week, so. I would recommend perhaps you do that as early as Monday. Maybe hold the record open. Until Monday morning at 8:00 a.m.
Sure.
And for anybody to submit anything they choose to through that email address that Whitney identified.
Could you repeat that, Whitney?
Board@deschutes.org.
Okay.
Yeah.
Board@deshoots.org.
And then you could deliberate on Monday afternoon and make a decision. And again, we need to, because of the tight timeline we're running into here on that thing. And then I would also point out that the, the hearing continues again tonight at 5:30. It's not a second chance to testify, it's just for folks who couldn't be here at 2:00. So, for what that's worth.
And I would just clear, oh, sorry, Commissioner Chang, go ahead.
While we've got you in focus, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the draft ordinance, because there's, particularly in light of some of the testimony we've received today, I don't think that the language of the draft ordinance is exactly right in all places. You know, in particular, I have concerns about the whereas about the rulemaking. You know, it's sort of a very sweeping statement that says that the, the rulemaking, that OHA has not completed rulemaking necessary to provide regulatory oversight for these kinds of facilities. And I do think it is reasonable to say that we don't have clarity on some land use implications. But, you know, as we've heard today, the, between the ballot measure and the rulemaking process, there's, there is quite a lot of clarity on many regulatory aspects of this. We're just really interested in land use, but, you know, issues like, you know, you know, where you can, where you can use the, the substances, you know, what kind of, you know, how your experience will be regulated and structured, those kinds of things. There's, there's quite a lot of regulatory framework around this. So, I would, you know, I'm, I'm prob, you know, I, just a indication, I am not leaning towards voting in favor of referring this measure to the, to the ballot anyway, but I'm much less likely to vote in, in support of that if the language is kind of more sweeping and loaded than, than if it's not. So, I mean, that, that whereas, I think, is problematic. I think the, the next whereas, saying that the Board of Commissioners believes the timing is appropriate to refer this matter, matter to the voters, I, I don't, you know, I think that that's, that's also potentially, that could be interpreted as, you know, a value-laden statement. You know, saying that the, the Board of Commissioners wants to know what the voters think. You know, that's, that's an okay thing to do, but, you know, I don't necessarily think that this is the, the most appropriate time to do this. It's, it's a time where the, the board is interested in finding out what voters think potentially, and that's the way I think that, that should be phrased. Similarly, I, I actually think that the, the number of people today who wanted to emphasize the 2020 election results, the percentage of Dushuts County voters that supported Measure 109, the number of voters that, that the margin was, you know, close to around 6,000, that that would actually be an appropriate piece of background to include as a whereas within this ordinance. So, those are just a couple of thoughts. And would love to, you know, I, I actually would love to hear from, from you, Dave, on whether there are actually opportunities to revise this ordinance before we even consider it.
Well, I would show support for, I mean, this is just a starting point. You could read anything, because we're, we're the ones that are voting on it and signing it. So, I mean, I'll just acknowledge that this is just a starting point of a document.
Right, yeah, this was a draft document. I think it was provided to the board about a month ago, three weeks ago. So, I mean, we certainly could change the language if at least two of you want to change. That's pretty much how the process would, would play out. So, you know, we, we did the best we could. I've seen some, some model ordinances that have floated around through AOC and LOC, and they basically took our ordinance and, and with very minor tweaks, are putting it out as sort of the model ordinance at the state level for both cities and counties. Happy to modify it any way the board directs on, on terms of the whereas is. You know, if, if you, if you, again, this becomes relevant if you pursue an opt-out. It, it really has no relevance if you don't. So, you know, I guess we could cross that bridge when and if two of you decide to refer it to, to the ballot in November.
So, all documents would have to be in, then emails by 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning, and our meeting will start at 1:00 in the afternoon.
If, if Monday's when you're going to deliberate, I mean, I think it probably.
Well, we have to do it by Wednesday.
Well, Wednesday would be the, really as late as we can go with some folks that are out of office. You folks don't meet the week of the fair, and then we have to get, if the measure goes forward, we have to get it to the county clerk in, in early to mid-August. So, we're, we're kind of running out of opportunities to have you folks deliberate.
Wednesday would be the best, then, if we get, you know.
Hey, if you want to have it, if you want to have it on Wednesday, then when would you want the deadline for any submissions to be?
Well, still Monday morning at 8:00 a.m., so we have.
Okay.
Couple of days to review everything.
Okay, so, but before you recess this session of the public hearing, we can make that clear again for folks, and then obviously, again, tonight, we'll make that clear as well, what that timeline would be. So, at this point, then, I'm hearing the board say you're going to, ultimately, after the hearing's done tonight, you're going to close the hearing, leave the record open through Monday at 8:00 a.m. for people to submit anything they choose to submit to that email that Whitney provided. And then you'll deliberate at your board meeting on Wednesday, the 20th.
Right.
I support that. So, and this is a legislative matter, so we've already gotten emails and phone calls, and we've made some contacts, but it's just an open information flow.
That's correct.
When we say keep the record open, really, from 2:00 today, all this testimony plus emails and, you know, we're not going to really archive phone messages, probably, but I mean, they're on our desk.
Basically, the significance of the timeline on the record is you're not going to look at anything that comes in after 8:00 on Monday.
So, it's really the end of this process.
Yeah, at some point, you have to have some ending point.
Right, and I think that gives us adequate time in order to be prepared for Wednesday.
Right.
If it comes, if Monday morning at 8:00 a.m. So, may I see if Allison is back on? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Allison, for joining us by phone.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for that wait. I'm actually a medical provider, so I had to go see a patient real quick, and now I'm back.
Okay, oh, Allison, if you can use your first and last name and your address for the record, thank you so much.
Sure, sure. My name is Allison Jones. My address is 132 Southeast 16th Street in Bend. And I am a nurse practitioner, and I, my background is in emergency medicine. Currently, I am the clinical director of a clinic that provides care to primarily patients with psychiatric conditions. And I just want to echo a lot of what you've already heard today. And basically, is that this is a super effective treatment. Psilocybin has a really good safety profile, and I think our, our county, our community, and our residents would really benefit from having increased access to it. And so I hope that we're not, we're not blocking the medical administration, the safe administration of these treatments by licensed physicians or advanced practice nurses, that therapists can get involved in this, because I think, as a whole, our community is going to be much healthier. You know, there's a lot of research out there, which you can get through the Oregon Health Authority, but basically, you know, depression is improved, PTSD is improved, substance abuse orders, disorders, excuse me, are improved, suicidal impulses are decreased, violent crimes are often decreased. There's a couple research articles out there about that, which, of course, we would really welcome in our community, in any community as well. And so, I'm asking that if you do put this to the voters, that you make a specific carve-out for the medical safe administration from licensed providers to patients with psychiatric conditions. That's all. Thank you for your time.
No, no, thank you for.
Thank you.
Coming back and taking the time, and we, we truly appreciate hearing from you today.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right. Stephanie, we're, we've acknowledged everyone, then? Okay, all right. So, I believe we will close the hearing at this moment.
We're going to continue it.
Well, continuing it at.
Till 5:30 this evening.
5:30 p.m. tonight.
It's a continuation of the same hearing, and so, again, just to be clear, if you've already testified, you wouldn't get another three minutes.
Right.
And the board will not be deliberating or making a decision tonight. So, if you want to know what they're going to do with it, you need to come back next Wednesday or listen in on the, the live stream or whatnot. So, try to save your timeline tonight if you don't want to necessarily come back this evening. They won't be making any decisions. They very, very well might ask some questions, as they have a few of the folks, and there'll be certainly additional testimony, so that's up to you. But they won't be making any decisions tonight. That'll occur next Wednesday.
And you can always watch us on Zoom, too, if you, if you want to, tonight.
Can I ask Dave one, could I ask Dave one question before we adjourn for.
Yes.
Till 5:30? Dave, something that Allison just said, it, it interested me. I mean, we are talking about referring an opt-out ballot measure to the voters. We just heard one constituent say, well, could you maintain access and opportunity for medical applications of psilocybin? And I, really, the, pretty much everyone we've heard from today has been testifying in a very passionate and articulate way about medical applications of psilocybin. Would it be possible to write an opt-out ballot measure that sort of split it down the middle and said, we don't want to allow recreational use of psilocybin, you know, in, in, in licensed facilities in Dushuts County, but we are open to supportive of medical uses?
Commissioner, my initial response would be no. The way the measure reads and the implementing state statute reads, I don't believe that they allow that distinction between, you know, that type of, of use modality. But we'll certainly look a little deeper at it, and there's just not a lot out there on it. I could look deeper into some of the literature that was associated with the measure. I don't know, the fellow that testified earlier that is in, was the proponent of the organization, that was behind Measure 109, perhaps he might have some input on that. But, but I think, as I read this, the statute, I don't, I don't see that that division is possible. I'm looking at Peter and Tanya, they're kind of our experts on it, and I don't see them nodding it is either, so.
And if it's not, if that's not something we can do as part of a ballot measure, is it something that we could do through time, place, and manner regulations?
I doubt that. That's kind of outside time, place, and manner and getting more into content and purpose, and I, I think that would probably run afoul of that. At least, that's my initial thought on it, without diving into it a whole lot deeper. Like I say, I will, over the break, see if I can find any literature that speaks to that and try to get back to you if I can.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Truly, medical seems to be really a critical fact to this. So, if you can find something, Dave, I think that would be great. So, we actually have an executive session, so we'll have that after our next hearing, then?
My understanding was you were going to suspend this, reconvene at 5:30 for the public hearing, and then we're going to reconvene upstairs in the Allen Room for the executive session.
Okeydoke. All right. So, until 5:30. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, I want to convene our continuation of our public hearing tonight at 5:30 PM. Fort Schuets County Commissioners, thank you Commissioner Chang for joining us. Has anyone that entered the room wanted to speak in person because you need to fill out a form? Or did you speak already? Okay, good. We do have someone online that wants to join us, so I believe it's Johanna.
Okay, sure.
Oh, should I read the rules again?
That would be great, if you don't mind just we might-
All the rules?
-folks joining us. I think it would be helpful if we reread the one pager.
Okay, so what did I do with all the rules? Here it is. Okay, let me reread the rules.
So Ray, we're going to do a little introduction to start before you do that.
Okay, yes, Ray, you'll have a, it'll just take me about a minute and a half. The purpose of today's public hearing is, the scope of this public hearing is singularly to determine whether the Commissioners should refer a measure to the ballot in November, which if approved by the voters would prohibit psilocybin operations within unincorporated Deschutes County. The measure will not impact psilocybin operations within the incorporated cities. Each person wishing to testify will have three minutes in which to do so. Three minutes. Public hearing, the procedure. At the start of the hearing, on Zoom, the panelists will be the Board of Commissioners and staff only. Attendees will be the general public and media. Testimony is allowed for three minutes, and the time clock will be displayed on the television monitors. The Board of County Commissioners Chair will call for public testimony in the following order. Attendees participating by attending in person, attendees participating through Zoom conference call, that will be the second priority, and third will be attendees participating via phone call. For those in the room, please fill out a blue request to speak form that is located near the door in the wooden tray and handed to our staff. When the Chair calls your name, please have a seat at the testimony table. At the beginning of your testimony, please state your name and address. For those participating via Zoom, once your name is called, you will be elevated from attendee status to panelist, and audio will be unmuted. Once your testimony is over, you will be returned to attendee status. For those participating via Zoom using a phone number, the last four digits of the attendees' number will be announced and will be elevated to panelist status with audio unmuted. Once your testimony is over, you will be returned to attendee status. So, Ray, I believe, we have no one in the room, we did have a couple join us, no one in the room that has filled out a blue sheet, I'm assuming. So Ray, let's go to Zoom, and we will recognize you, and please identify yourself, your address, and recognize that you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners, I live at 1-868-0-TUMALO-RESERVOR-RHOE in Bend, and my name is Ray Gertler. I am a licensed psychologist and psychotherapist, and I've practiced in Deschutes County since 1986, including working initially at Deschutes County Mental Health Department back in 1986. I also have a license in clinical social work, and at one point even provided employee assistance services to Deschutes County on a contract basis. I've been a resident of Deschutes County for 36 years. I know up to this point you've heard some about the research and efficacy of psilocybin treatment and what it's done for people, so I'm not going to go into that. I do want to speak a little bit about my own clinical practice and experience. I've been in practice for the past 35 years and have seen patients suffering from alcohol and drug dependency, as well as patients experiencing depressive disorders. For some of these clients, traditional approaches such as counseling, utilization of 12-step programs like AA and NA have been beneficial. For some patients, various therapeutic approaches combined with antidepressant medication has also been very helpful. Despite this, there's a significant number of people who do not respond to these traditional approaches. Alcoholics, drug addicts often relapse, and we all know the huge cost to society in terms of loss of productivity, absenteeism, family dysfunction, and overall misery associated with relapse. Similarly, despite my and my colleagues' best efforts at treatment, a significant number of people with major depression and anxiety often relapse, don't improve over time, and often have great difficulty managing and being compliant with the medication they are prescribed. Many people have to stay on medications for their lifetime in order to manage their condition with all its concomitant side effects. Psilocybin holds out the possibility of a new impactful treatment that can lead to long-term changes in mental health in a relatively short time without long years of ongoing maintenance therapies. I'm very excited and hopeful about these psilocybin therapies and what they might offer to many of these patients who are not responsive to traditional therapies. And I also want to just make a comment, as a landowner in Tumalo on acreage, I have been affected by some of the policies allowing for cannabis cultivation and particularly the impact on water, but I am not concerned at all about the implications of psilocybin facilities being created in the county. The measure has many safeguards and regulations, and I don't believe there'll be an adverse impact on the rural community I live in. Given the severity of the mental health crisis in this state and in the county, I would hope that we would encourage and nurture an approach that might contribute significantly to ameliorating a very significant source of human suffering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray, so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
So you've been a resident for 36 years, and you did briefly work for Deschutes County, then?
I did, when I first came to Deschutes County.
Great, well, thank you so much.
Yeah, sure.
Good to hear from you. Okay, it looks like, Johanna? Thank you so much, I saw your email, I'm glad you were able to join us tonight.
I thank you very much.
And you did get, if you could identify yourself and your address, please, for the record, thank you, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, I am not a resident of Deschutes County, I'm a resident of Crook County, but I work in Deschutes County at Temple Best Tikva where I serve as an ordained Rabbi at the Central Conference of American Rabbis, and at Bend Counseling and Biofeedback, which is 296 Columbia, sorry, Southwest Columbia, and that's Bend 97701.
Okay. Go ahead with your testimony, and also, we are, if you have information you want to share with us, and Randy, this goes for you too, we are, we will be taking public testimony into the record, it goes to board@deschutes.org, you know, if there's anything else additional after your testimony, and I took a couple of seconds of your time, so go ahead.
I thank you very much. So in addition to being an ordained Rabbi, I am a licensed professional counselor associate, I'll be finished with my license in September, October, and I'm personally aiming towards service provider and facilitator under the new measures as they proceed. Why is that? That is because I believe that the clinical trials that are available that have occurred in the United States since about 1994, the beginning of the resurgence of research, have demonstrated rather conclusively that this assisted therapy is really finding efficacy that does not occur, as my colleague, Dr. Ray Gertler, mentioned, in a variety of clients and patients. The clinical research, the trials that I have access to include treatment-resistant major depressive disorder, anxiety disorders, obsessive-compulsive disorder, depression and anxiety in late-stage cancer patients, smoking cessation, and alcohol abuse. Out of the Imperial College of London, looking at treatment-resistant depression in an open-label study, looking at feasibility and efficacy of psilocybin alongside this traditional psychotherapy, used 12, had 12 subjects with moderate to severe major depressive disorder. Two doses were administered one week apart, first a low dose, then a high dose, and there were preparations and follow-up sessions. Average severity of depressive symptomology reduced by 50% of the 12 subjects. Eight patients achieved clinical remission after the first week. Seven held reduction in the severity of their symptoms at greater than 50% three months later. And a six-month follow-up study conducted with that sample and an increase, up to 20 patients demonstrated clinically significant reduction in suicidality. At six months, nine subjects did not score again in terms of suicidality. Three relapsed in their suicidality scores, and six held straight. The National Institutes of Health are sharing the palliative care and late-stage cancer studies. In one study, 12 patients with advanced cancer and reactive anxiety, after two sessions, two weeks apart, found a greater than or equal to 50% reduction in depression and anxiety, and found that in the control group, only 50% experienced any reduction in those symptoms.
Johanna-
In a randomized, yeah.
We're, we are actually over our three minutes, but-
All right.
No, no, can you email this to us?
Information you said would be available, yes.
Yes, so please email it to-
The bottom line is also in alcoholic dependence and cessation, we're seeing efficacy that we just don't see in other modes, and to continue and bring that work to central Oregon is just essential for our population. But I will send the rest to you in writing, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, you have a lot of detail there, and I truly appreciate the research that you're sharing tonight, so thank you. And you did get the email, correct?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, okay. It looks like, yes. Hello, good evening.
There we go. My name is Liz Gerne, and I just have a quick comment that I hope will be helpful.
Address, please.
Oh, yes, we need your address?
Right. 2636 Pomona Way, P-O-M-O-N-A Way, and I'm in Medford.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm a professional who works in licensing and compliance, so I've been tracking the rules, and I just wanted to say that I heard the earlier session, and Commissioner Chang mentioned perhaps quite the task in developing local rules there. And I just want to make sure you're aware that the OHA, with recommendations from the OPAB, have spent a long time drafting really granular, granular rules on this. And so I think you can, you can rest assured that the rules are not liberal, they're conservative with an eye towards safety. And if you want me to send you any of those Oregon Psilocybin Advisory Board recommendations or any of the rules, just for your ease of reference, so you can see the level of detail that they've gotten down to with regard to the physical premises, testing, products, training of the facilitators, 120 hours, just, there's just a lot there, and I wanted to make sure that Commissioner Chang was aware of the level of detail at the state level. And that's really all I had to say. Thank you for your time today, and I wanted to specifically thank you for a really open environment here for this discussion, I'm feeling that and I appreciate that. So that's about it.
Thanks for following.
Liz, if you don't mind sending what you have, as far as information goes, to board@deschutes.org, that would be really excellent. And you're saying that it's 120 hours training, and then you can be certified?
Yes, I mean, there's an exam, there's a practicum, the facility has to have a clinical supervisor, there's just so much front-end work and supervision and oversight at the point of administration of this clinical medication. So yeah, I'd be happy to send you that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for joining us from Medford, then.
Right on.
Thank you. No more hands raised?
We have a form coming.
What?
It looks like we might have a form coming.
Okay, a form coming, okay, great. Great, thank you so much, we're ready. Thank you, I'll take it, thanks. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
The one that's filled out.
Okay, Jeff, if you want to just get one of the front tables and share, oh, you're on Quail Road in, what's-
Oh, Terrebonne.
Terrebonne, okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, well, do I need to use this mic, or can you guys hear me okay up there?
You can hear you fine, but, yeah, it is public record, so you do need to speak into it.
Sure, okay, no problem.
You don't need to get real close to it.
No, it works pretty well.
You can tell I'm very, I'm very prepared for this. So, yeah, go ahead. Do we, do I, do I start, you guys?
Yes, please.
You're next, yeah.
All right, cool, so, um- All right. Cool. So, I came here and I apologize. I just found out about this today. And I was actually excited that I could be involved with any decision when it comes to the use of psilocybin. I understand that's not the actual thing, but it's incorporated versus unincorporated access to it and land use and whatnot, right? So, being unincorporated and being a veteran...
If you could identify yourself with your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Oh, I missed that. Thank you.
It's okay.
Yeah. All right. So, 14840 Southwest Quail Road, Terrebonne.
Last name is Lebowski?
Yep. 97760. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. So anyways, I'm really excited that we're one of the pioneers in states with this. And I'm very familiar with not just the treatment on a larger level, but also the microdosing as a veteran. A lot of my peers, unfortunately, have a lot of mental health due to their service, so we've kind of been roding hard and put away wet, so to speak, and especially those from the special operations community. And we're losing a lot of them. This type of treatment is saving lives. I've been on the receiving end of it, and access to it is very important because everyone's like, oh, you're a veteran, you can just go to the VA, do this or that. Well, I very rarely step foot in those facilities just because I don't, there isn't always the best treatment, the best access to things, the best doctors, the best things. We get prescribed stuff that actually ends up sometimes making matters worse. So to find out that this is coming to the state, and if we have a decision to decide it's only going to be in one part of the county where we have to come, or more areas, more treatment centers, stuff that can be more remote or more accessible to guys like me that's a little further north, then I would vastly encourage us to keep it in areas for us. I'm doing okay. I can get to Bend every now and again, but sometimes it's not always feasible. And if we limit healthcare, which is what this is for us, to just Bend or just the incorporated part of Deschutes County, then you're kind of limiting the help that we need and the access that some guys can't get in a car and go drive to. So anyways, 15 seconds left. That's it. You guys got any questions for me?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you for your service and acknowledge that Dr. Breen is a retina specialist who works in the VA in Bend.
Awesome.
He doesn't do private practice, but he is an amazing, amazing eye doctor. So...
Okay, well...
Maybe it's not always good, but I know he is.
No, no. And I'm not trying to, you know, I've had some good services also. There's good and bad everywhere. You just try to find the best treatment. But I appreciate the thanks and the acknowledgement. The best way you could thank all of us is to keep the facilities open for us and the access to treatments and to projects that are doing amazing things. Really is. So, appreciate it.
Where did you get your treatment at?
Um, I'd rather, I'd rather not say. Yeah, only, only because of we're in this gray area right now. And for those that are continuing to seek help there, I would hate to get something disrupted because not everything is fully established and in place right now. But is that okay?
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for making the trip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the room? Did you turn in your blue card?
She can.
Okay, we need that, please. I'll just take it so I could read your name.
Pretty informal today.
Yes.
We're ready for a bigger crowd, possibly.
Okay. So if you want to go ahead and identify yourself, thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Start with name and address?
Yes, please.
My name is Mikel Wilson, and my address is P.O. Box 7945, Bend, Oregon 97708.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, to start off, that I believe in this medicine and support this measure. And the main point that I wanted to bring to you is that the members who support this measure want to create a committee advisory board for land use and would like to start now.
Okay.
Thank you for that offer.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Great. No, thank you. And if you did want to write something, emails need to come in by 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning, please. And we will have our public hearing next Wednesday.
Not a public hearing.
Well, no, it won't be a public, it will be a determination. We'll do our deliberations on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you for joining us.
Could I just ask a clarifying question or two?
Yes. Is a question for you?
Yes. Mikel, you mentioned members, and I was curious what, what group or organization you were talking about members of. And thank you for your offer to participate in. I think what you were offering was to help the county with developing our, the time, place, and manner requirements that we would develop if we proceed with having a psilocybin program within Deschutes County. But could you, could you just confirm that and then also just let me know who you were talking about when you were saying members?
Could I defer this to Piper Lucas? Would that be possible?
I already gave my testimony.
Right. So you can send it with an email, if you don't mind.
Well, if Piper wants to mention that right now, I don't mind. I'd like to hear.
Okay.
There you go. It's been deferred. Oh, come to the mic again, please, and just...
We just, I was talking to other members that are working in education and information for everybody. And we just wanted to get it across that as far as we know from Sam Chapman, there are no more land use laws coming forward. What is in the measure is what is final. So we don't need to wait for anything to come forward, as far as I understand. We can start working on the time, place, and manner if the commissioners decide to do so. And I know that there's a lot of informed people that would be willing to serve on a advisory committee and help in that matter.
Thank you. That was...
Well, who's "we," though? I mean, is it formal or informal group, or just advocates as a whole, or what are you referring to?
Well, the Healing Advisory Fund is definitely helping us, and there's an informal group that is slowly becoming more formal.
Okay.
But informal.
So just "we"?
"We." Yep.
Okay.
You said the Healing Advisory?
Advocacy Fund. I'm sorry. It's Sam Chapman. He's the executive director. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Stephanie, did anyone else step up?
Same here.
No hands, no phone calls. Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Chang, did you have somebody? No. Okay. Is everyone good?
Peter or Tanya, did you have any just thoughts or feedback? Yeah, I mean, yeah. So there was an offer for, you know, kind of the committee work here, but what's, I don't know how far we want to go tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner Chang. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. You know, the only thing that I would acknowledge in regards to the last person's testimony, you know, our understanding at the, at the planning director level is that starting in September, the Oregon Health Authority is going to be performing rulemaking for the service centers. And while they may not be dabbling in land use, they're going to be discussing operational characteristics of what a service center can become. And those operating characteristics, how much psilocybin might be available at any one time, how many patients can be served by a facilitator at any one time, whether service centers can or can't add, or maybe it's ambiguous, maybe they don't address it, can they accommodate overnight services from screening to facilitation to debriefing. So it's, it's those characteristics, or, excuse me, those operating, operational factors that I think have, you know, compelled directors and whatnot to ensure that their elected officials ultimately are aware of, of that process. So at the end of the day, at least in Deschutes County's case, the commissioners can, can make an informed decision about whether or not an opt-out ordinance is prudent or not. And Community Development Department is not, is not taking a position on, on psilocybin whatsoever. It's, it's really just acknowledging the ambiguity at this stage that local governments, specifically rural counties, are experiencing with the status, the status of the rulemaking. And my last point is that that rulemaking pertaining to service centers won't be in effect until late December, right, prior to the first Monday of the New Year in 2023. So those, those determinations, I think, will provide some context, again, about how service centers can, can operate in both rural, rural counties and certainly within, within city limits.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I mean, it's, what's the starting point? And what are there variables out there in the future that we think are coming? It's going to be an interesting dynamic at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. One more person just joined the room, and I believe you want to do some testimony. If you want to come up and fill out your form when you're done.
You walked in, you're right up.
That...
Yes, please.
Please do that. And then you can hand me your form when you're finished, if you don't mind. You need to say your name and your address, and you do have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. You said my name and my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Vicky Colira, and my address is 109 Northwest Outlook Vista Drive, here in Bend.
Mm-hmm.
Hello. My name is Vicky Colira. I am a medical doctor, and my specialty is in addiction psychiatry. I serve as the Acting Medical Director for the Addiction Recovery Treatment Services for the VA Northern California Healthcare System. I am also actively working on obtaining my Oregon State Medical License. The opinions herein are only my own and do not represent that of the VA. I would also like to share that I have stock in companies who are studying the therapeutic use of psychedelics, including psilocybin. "Good evening to the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts on the use of psilocybin as a mental health treatment tool in Deschutes County. I'd like to take a moment to share my background. I was fortunate enough to train at Johns Hopkins University and New York University, institutions that are amongst the world's leaders in psychedelic research. In 2017, I transitioned to the Department of Veterans Affairs and worked at a VA that led the field in studying the use of psilocybin in group therapy sessions for veterans with PTSD. It gives me a great sense of pride to now be a part of a state that recognizes the opportunity to potentially save lives and steps up, and steps up amongst our entire nation to provide access to its, to its citizens. As a physician, my ability to care for people is limited by my access to tools. Psilocybin is one of those tools. When veterans request access to psilocybin, we cross our fingers that they will be lucky enough to meet clinical criteria for a VA research trial and that the timing works out. If not, they have to find other resources on their own. This leaves this already vulnerable population more vulnerable. As I have seen, they don't often understand how to incorporate the psilocybin into their treatment plan, and like most things in medicine, they need guidance. Because of the limited resources out there, veteran groups like the Heroic Hearts Project have taken it upon themselves to take care of their own. Ideally, we can offer more support to our service members. As a psychiatrist, I see opportunities to incorporate psilocybin frequently. Recent research suggests that one to two administrations of psilocybin with psychological support produces antidepressant effects in those with treatment-resistant depression. This is unique to psilocybin. The other interventions for treatment-resistant depression require multiple visits to a clinic, for example, daily visits over weeks at a time, or the use of several medication combinations, each with its own set of potential side effects. Imagine asking a rural Oregonian with arguably the most severe form of depression to travel to a clinic every single day for weeks in hopes they might respond to treatment. As an addiction psychiatrist, I see veterans with nicotine use disorder daily. In 2014, a pilot study found the use of psilocybin in the context of a cognitive behavioral therapy treatment program could help long-term smokers to quit. After six months, 80% of participants continued to abstain, whereas less than 40% of participants who received the current FDA-approved medications were still abstinent. The potential public health impact of having such an effective treatment is not lost on the National Institutes of Health, National Institute of Drug Abuse, who awarded Johns Hopkins an unprecedented $4 million grant to lead a study to further explore potential impacts of psilocybin on tobacco addiction. Despite our limitations in broadly studying psilocybin in the past 50 years, we have still demonstrated such powerful effects with a strong safety profile. With this in mind, it is my hope that this board will consider protecting access, access to these treatment tools as options for its citizens in Deschutes County.
Dr. Colira, did you graduate from Johns Hopkins Medical School?
I graduated from West Virginia University School of Medicine, and then I did my residency at Johns Hopkins University, and then I did my addiction training through a fellowship program at New York University.
New York. Okay. Wonderful. If you have any information that you can email us, please do so. I'm really glad that you took the time tonight to come. But it just goes to board@deschutes.org.
Okay.
But, you know, thank you so much for sharing this. Truly, you know, it's a pleasure to meet you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else here? All right. So...
So at this point, if you've got everybody, I would recommend you close the oral portion of the public hearing. You can, you're leaving the record, you've already made that decision, open until 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning for anybody to submit anything they want to that email. I think it's board@deschutes.org.
Board@deschutes.org.
Got it.
And the board will deliberate and open in this room on the 20th, Wednesday, July 20th. That meeting starts at 9:00.
Okay. Yes, it does. Thank you very much. We'll do our agenda tomorrow. So, okay, we'll close the public hearing. We've heard from our, Peter Gatawski, from our Building Department. Thank you, Peter, for those words of wisdom and how you see it. And Tanya, I'm sure we'll talk to you later then. So everyone, please remember that if you do want to submit documentation, written documentation, it is available up till 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning. On, what date is that? Do we have a date?
18th.
What?
18th.
Okay. Yes, July 18th. So please, please do that. So appreciate everyone coming in and taking the time. For those people that came this afternoon, yes, Stephanie?
I got one more.
Oh, well, I've already closed it. What do we do?
You can reopen it.
Okay. We'll reopen. Did they have a hard time finding the up button or something? Yes.
I think they're just commenting with video.
Oh, okay.
Turn them over and they can just be audio.
Oh, they're going to be audio. Okay, sure. Thank you. Okay, we've reopened the public hearing for one last testimony. Philip, thank you for joining us. If you could give us your, your name and address, and then you have three minutes. And thank you so much for joining us.
Sure. Philippe Levy, 511 Northwest Flagline Drive.
In what city?
Bend, Oregon.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a few anecdotal experiences to share. I'm sort of also operating in the gray area in terms of finding access. And both in discussions with others and my personal experience, what I wanted to add to the discussion is just what psilocybin brings to me personally is something that I find difficult to get from talk therapy, and that is to bring a body element into ideas that are, I've already been introduced to, that I understand through therapy. Psilocybin helps me sort of zoom out and both understand from an analytical perspective what I'm missing, what's sort of hiding in the shadows, perhaps issues that I haven't dealt with, stuff from my childhood, et cetera. It brings my body into it and helps me feel the gravity of leaving those issues in the dark. And I've not experienced that with any... And I've not experienced that with any other form of therapy. And then so my talk therapy experience afterwards ends up having so much more gravity because I'm able to sort of place myself in my own past and kind of begin the healing process with those traumas. And that's what I have to share.
Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. That's good. Oh, Dr. Colira, did you fill out the blue form for us?
Yeah.
Okay. I just need it in my records, please. Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anyone else on? Okay. Going once, going twice. Okay, closing the public hearing for the second time, or maybe the third time. And no, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and we truly appreciate what we've heard from our community. So thank you. And we will look for your... If you send an email by Monday morning, 8:00 a.m., that would be excellent. So thank you. And the meeting is adjourned.